Good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order. And the first item is the adoption received of the agenda items. And before I ask for a motion, I would request a change in it to move H2 and L1 to after other business, as those will be, probably take some time. So we can go through, go through the business first. So councillor Fox moves it. Is there a second, councillor Qualley? And councillor Fox on the agenda? Do you wish to speak to the agenda?
No, I just wanted to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
As amended, okay. So with that, I'll call the question. Oh, sorry, for councillor Sparrow's information, the agenda's on the, has been moved and seconded with H2 and L1 to be moved.
We may want to wait with Davis.
Okay.
We're striking.
So we're about to vote. It's been moved and seconded on the agenda that H2 and L1 will be moved to after other business.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. So now we move on to the adoption of the minutes for the regular evening council meeting of June 26th, the public hearing of June 26th, and the public hearing of June 27th. Councillor Fox, seconded. Councillor Whitmarsh, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, with all, no discussion. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. There are no presentations, no delegations, and we move no, no reports to council. Move on to bylaws for first and second reading. Rezoning application number 100475 is bylaw number 5278, Township of Langley, 2631638 Avenue. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Davis moves it, seconder. Councillor Fox, any discussion on F1? Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Through you to staff, I noticed on the depiction, there was some significant water body that was contained there. I just wondered if somebody could tell me what that is?
Mrs. Seffey.
It's a big blue blob.
Your worship, the information is based on our geosource mapping, which is based on aerial photography. So based on the latest aerial photography, there appears to be a water body. I have not personally walked the site, so I cannot confirm or verify its existence. But that will be part of the process to make sure that it's appropriately dealt with as part of the process.
Okay. And on a completely unrelated note, so I noticed that there's industrial zoning in this, this area, but there's suburban residential. Is there any opportunity that we could collectively look at this area and rezone larger than just property by property?
Mrs. Seffey.
If I understand the question correctly, your worship, council always has the ability to initiate a rezoning application subject to the, the process, but it, it has not in my, in my history of the Township of Langley been done before, other than through a landowner-initiated process.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Long. Yeah, you can see that it used to be all purple before that red part came in. I noticed that there was a, no public open house held. Now, I know it's our property, the township owns this property, it's public property. But I guess that was waived. But I mean, normally a proponent would have to have an open house, is that correct?
Your worship, it depends on a, a number of factors, including whether it's a community plan amendment and how significant of a change it is. If it was falling within the, the criteria that, that triggers an open house, an open house, one would have been held regardless of who's driving the application. In this case, it wasn't triggered.
Okay. And I guess we'll have a, a big open house if this, if it gets first and second reading, because there'll be a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you. Seeing over the discussions, I'll now call the question on F1. It carries unanimously. We move on to F2, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100142, development permit application number 100841, bylaw 5287 and bylaw 5288. This is Levitt Holdings, Inc. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Sparrow. Any discussion on F2? Councillor Long.
Well, thanks. So on this one, was there, was there an open house on this? And there have been some that say that this is not consistent with the community plan. So maybe staff could clarify that?
Mr. Backen. Or, sorry, Mr. Seffey.
Thank you, your worship. As council is aware, your worship, we have a hierarchy of, of planning documents that help guide staff's recommendations to council. At the highest level, we have, I guess below the sustainability charter, we have the official community plan. The official community plan designation is consistent with intended use. However, below that, we have an outdated plan, which was not, has not been updated to reflect the OCP, if you will, is the rural plan. The OCP designation, as this map shows, corresponds with the regional growth strategy and, and appropriately designates the site as, as industrial. However, as I said, the more, the older, more outdated plan, the rural plan, which was adopted in the 90s, I believe, has not been updated to reflect the OCP, which was updated by council a couple of years ago, a few years ago. And as such, it is inconsistent with the designation of the rural plan, which designated a site as small farm country estates. So there's a need to bring harmony between our own documents, the highest level, the OCP, the intended use conforms with that, and at the lower level, the rural plan does not.
Okay, thanks for that. So it does confirm, it does conform to the, to the OCP. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. The correspondence that we received generally had to do with the aquifer, I think, and also issues about traffic. So can I just ask through, your worship, to staff, the, the applicant, is that going to be subject to being on municipal water and sewer? Or are they going to take care of that themselves?
Your worship, the servicing and development servicing bylaw requires extension of the water network, water system.
But not sewer?
Uh... I'll have to confirm that, your worship. Just looking to Mr. Richardson to, to see if there's any reference in the report. I do know that typically, your worship, the sewer, sewer servicing is subject to GBRD approval if it's outside of their catchment boundary. I am not sure if this parcel is within their catchment, the sewage catchment area or not.
It's outside.
Okay.
Just outside.
It's outside the sewage drainage area.
Okay.
And it does...
So septic system, your worship, for sewer servicing, but, but water.
Okay. Thank you.
And I did have another question. It was kind of hard to make out. On the north side of the property where it's adjoining to the, the residences there, can you tell me how wide the buffer would be between those if that property is amended for that use?
Seffey.
Just looking at the landscape plan, your worship, and it looks like...
I thought it said three meters, but I couldn't tell.
We're just looking through the, the information, your worship, and hopefully we'll, we'll have it, otherwise, three meters.
Okay. And, and is that strictly landscaping? No, no fence?
Including fence. There's a fence and three meter landscape.
A fence, okay, thank you.
Councillor Richter.
Yes. Some of the comments that came in asked about putting a turning lane, a left-hand turn lane on Fraser Highway to accommodate this. Is this included as part of the rezoning?
Seffey.
No, your worship, the, the left-hand turn lane, is that at 244th Street?
That was what I thought they were referring to, Fraser Highway at 244th.
Haven't had a chance to take a look at the submissions, your worship, but it will be considered prior to public hearing if it goes to that far.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on F2? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. It carries with councillor Richter and councillor Arneson opposed. Now we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading, and this is liquor licensing policy, bylaw number 5302. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Fox, seconded by councillor Sparrow. And any discussion, questions on G1? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Oh, sorry. Councillor Long.
Your worship, maybe staff can answer this quickly. I don't want to get into a big, long response, but what is happening with like microbreweries or places that are now brewing their own beer? Currently, that's considered manufacturing. Is there any movement towards those kinds of changes to our policy to allow, you know, restaurants to, to serve? You brew, I guess you could call it.
Seffey.
Your worship, we're accommodating the policy.
So it would now be allowed? So in other words, it wouldn't have to be in a manufacturing zone?
Based on the provincial legislation, they would have, they are identified as a separate type of a licence, and our policy reflects the provincial legislation.
But our zoning bylaws don't, don't yet allow it, or does it? I think there might be some changes required for zoning, right?
They do allow them in, in industrial zones. I think what you may be referring to, councillor Long, your worship, may be referring to is, is possibility of accommodating such uses in, in commercial zones.
Correct, yeah.
And that would be up to council.
Subject to another day, but we should keep that in mind.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I'll call a question for G1. It carries unanimously. And we have bylaws for consideration at third reading, H1, and that's official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100097, development permit application number 100821, and the bylaws 5280, 5281, Reno Investments. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Fox, seconded by councillor Whitmarsh. Councillor Qualley.
Thanks. Based on the information we heard back from the public at the public hearing and the submissions that came in, I'd like to make a referral. So I'd like to refer this back to staff to work with the proponent to reduce density to achieve double garages for each unit and create sufficient onsite parking.
Is there a, seconded by councillor Richter. So I'll open up discussion. I think somebody pushed the button, but I just opened it. Any discussion on the referral? Councillor Long.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm not convinced that that's by any means a good move. This is, this is probably the area where one would want to have as much density as, as could be allowed. It's, it's in an area that is within minutes of major amenities, including shopping and medical services. There's a police station, a library, my gosh, the hospital's just across the street, swimming pool. And I, I'm not hung up like the rest of council on this, on the tandem parking. I, I don't think that that's a problem. I think there's a mix in here. And in my case, you know, my wife and I have no trouble working out who's going to take what car. And I think as the future goes, we talk about rideshare and, and other incentives to try and reduce the use of the motor vehicle. Here's, here's an opportunity where everything's in walking distance. I think you're going to have a lot of affordability issues if you remove the density. If the density goes down, it won't be affordable. I think there's lots of talk around council table about that. And I think that the way it's, it's been presented, and we, we heard from some of the owners at the public hearing, many of the owners are going to be living there. So they've, they've, they're quite happy with the layout, so. And we've already sent it back once. And, you know, it came back saying, well, that is allowed in our bylaw. So if you want to change that township-wide, that's another issue, but I don't think it's appropriate. I think tandem parking has, it has a use and it has a, an effect that is positive in, in certain developments. It doesn't have to all be tandem parking, but there's a good mix in here. It's a great location, and what's there right now surely needs replacing. So I wouldn't support a referral.
Thank you. Councillor Sparrow.
Yeah, I have to say, I agree with councillor Long's points. I think we have to be cautious of what we would be doing for the affordability of these units if we're going to make them all double-wide units. I think there needs to be a mix of that for, for people to be able to afford to live in the area. And it does meet all of our requirements, so I'm a little cautious of sort of willy-nilly picking and choosing which developments we're going to hold to our current bylaws and which ones we're going to make exceed them. I think we need to maybe look at that from a policy perspective if we feel that is the case and, and have it be something that is fairly done throughout the development community. And I would say, I think we need to be very cautious of that as well, because that does definitely affect affordability for people. The tandem units are oftentimes the units that, you know, single moms or single parents can afford, first-time buyers. There needs to be able to be that mix, or we're going to end up having, you know, the average townhouse be a, a million-dollar purchase for people, and that's just not going to be affordable. So I, I think the development has addressed the parking issues. They, they have met the requirement for that, and I do think we need to provide a mix for people to be able to have a choice of which units they can afford and which ones they can't. So I won't support it.
Thank you. Councillor Richter.
I think there's going to be parking problems as a result of this development, and we've already heard from the businesses and the neighbors across the street that there's parking issues already and that we could, they could be losing more of their street parking because of this. What I find particularly problematic about this development is the fact that in the tandem parking units, there isn't even room to put a car on the driveway in front of the garage. It's, it's just a very small lip. And those didn't work well and don't work well in Willoughby. I don't think they're going to work well in, in Murrayville either.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley.
I, you know, I appreciate the comments, but I don't feel like this is willy-nilly. I mean, they're here with an application for us to decide on, and if it met all their requirements, they wouldn't be here looking for variances to the plan, which is why they're here. I just don't think, based on all the information I heard at the public hearing, that the, this is the right fit for this area. I also understand that since the public hearing, the holdout piece in the center of the entire development has come up for sale. So I'm not sure that there's not an opportunity to revisit the entire plan if they can acquire that extra piece. So again, my rationale is I don't think this development fits in this location, and we heard from all the neighbors behind and all the neighbors on the other side of 48th Avenue. So that's why I'm not going to support the, I'll support the amendment, but I'm not able to support the application as it is.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think the, you know, this has come back a second time here, and I think the proponent made some of the, the adjustments that we asked them to do. Maybe not quite as far as some would like in terms of the tandem parking, and I'm not necessarily a big proponent of tandem parking, but I do think that the, more than half the units here, or approximately half of the units, are double-car garages. And, and so I think they've made some adjustments. I think it does provide some affordable housing opportunities. There's significantly lower cost for those units. I think that's important. And, and while this piece is cut out here, we do have sort of a, a drawing of what it would look like, really, which is four more units with double-car garages on the other side, is what it looks like if that happened to come available. So, so I, I don't think, and, and the neighbors that are bordering the backyard here, I know that's a bit of a concern, but I'm not sure having units with double-car garages or single units with tandem would make any difference to them. I think it's the same issue either way for them, and that's the privacy issue that they have. And so, so I would, I'd like to keep it the way it is and would not support it going to staff.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, I am going to support it going back to staff because, as councillor Richter suggested and as the original mover said, I, I think part of the issue is, you know, and it's not just the tandem parking for me, but it's the overall parking context that we have in the neighborhood. So we've got businesses, we have other residents, and I think that we shouldn't be visiting those kind of problems, because when I hear from other neighborhoods where people are jostling and, and fighting for parking spots and having to look to, you know, secure something very early in the day so they don't have to go two blocks to get to their property, I think that we ought to do better than that. And so I, I would support this going back, just to see if we can't get something that's a little bit, you know, more successful for that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I have a question for staff. Mr. Seffey. The existing community plan, as I understand it, and you can help me out with this, allows for mixed use, commercial and residential?
Yes, it does, your worship. That's correct.
Okay. And how high would those buildings be, are allowed? Two-story, three-story, two-and-a-half?
There would be two-story.
So, in essence...
Single-family.
Okay, so, no, so two-story, but it's commercial, mixed with some availability for, for single-family use or apartments?
Your worship, it's not a mixed-use development. It's a split zone, if you will. So commercial along 48th and residential, single-family at the back.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. So it could have, under the existing zoning, it would allow for residential on the back?
Designation, yes.
Under the existing designation, okay. Thank you very much.
Single-family.
Single-family, yeah. Yeah, but there'll still be, and, and the height of the buildings would be regular, like how it's two, two-and-a-half story? Okay, thanks. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on the amendment. And this is, this is a referral, sorry, not amendment, I apologize. It's a referral to staff to reduce the density. So this is H1. And the referral fails. Councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, mayor froze, councillor Sparrow, councillor Long opposed. We're back to the main motion. Any discussion, councillor Long, did you have something on the main motion, or is that a referral? Any discussion on the main motion? I'll call the question on the main motion. And it carries, councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, mayor froze, councillor Sparrow, councillor Long, oh, sorry, councillor Richter, councillor Arneson, councillor Qualley, councillor Davis are opposed. I'll get it right yet. Hey, so now we move on, we skip over H2, because that's been moved to the back, to the end of the, the meeting. Move on to bylaws for final adoption, I1, and councillor Fox moves it, seconder. Councillor Arneson, any discussion on I1? Seeing none, call the question. It carries unanimously. I2 is highway closure, dedication, removal, and disposal, bylaw 5231. Councillor Davis, seconder. Councillor Fox, discussion, seeing none, call the question on I2. It carries with councillor Richter opposed. I3, highway closing, dedication, removal, township amendment, bylaw 5295. Motion. Councillor Davis, second. Councillor Fox, discussion, seeing none, call the question on I3. Councillor Richter opposed, and it carries. I4 is the rezoning and community plan amendment, application number 100117, development permit application number 100765, and this is bylaw 5137, bylaw 5138. Motion's councillor, sorry, is that, Long, and seconder. Councillor Fox, just to be clear, the development permit is a separate motion, Mr. Backen? Okay, so we're just dealing with the bylaws on this one? Any discussion?
This is final adoption.
And the development permit is a separate motion, so we're just doing the bylaws? Councillor Fox.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think we need to get this done. This piece of property is integral to the corner of southwest, southeast corner of 80th and 208th, and we need to get this done. This corner needs attention, and it's great to see that it's finally coming forward. Just a quick question. I couldn't find it, I think all the parking in, on the townhouses, and this is, is tandem parking, side-by-side, sorry, parking. Am I correct in that, through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffey?
Seffey.
I couldn't find it.
That's correct, your worship.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the question on the bylaws, I4. It carries with councillor Arneson, councillor Davis opposed. So now on the development permit application 100765, we need a motion on that. Councillor Long, seconded by councillor Sparrow, discussion on the DP. Seeing none, I'll call the question. It carries with councillor Arneson, councillor Davis opposed. And we move on to the mayor and council report. And based on our heavy agenda, I've got a very short report tonight. Just like to welcome everyone to our meeting. It's good to see a full house. And today, I just want to report a little bit about Canada Day and our local Canada 150 celebrations. We began on Saturday, July 1st, in Fort Langley and at the, at the Fort Langley National Historic Site. And 50 new, new Canadian citizens were, were sworn in by Judge Gerald Pash as new Canadians. So it was, it was nice to see on the, on the Canada 150 birthday. And then we're all off to the Langley Centenary Museum for the official cake cutting, and the B.C. Farm Museum also had a celebration occurring at the same time. And then off to Willoughby Community Park for the JR-VQ community celebration, where several members of council attended. Next meeting, we'll have a full report, kind of a, to move us right into the summer, the summer break, but because of our agenda today, I wanted to make it short and just recognize Canada 150 on July 1st, and certainly a lot of good things were happening in the community. So with that, that's my mayor's report. Is that a record? Is that a record? Tell ya. No, as Churchill said, no one has ever, no one's ever not liked a presentation that's too short. Never complained about that, so that's a good one. Metro Vancouver representatives report, anything to report? Okay. So we skip over items from prior meetings, as that was been moved over. We go to other business, and I'm just going to clear the queue. And councillor Richter.
Yes, with regards to the truck route and the master transportation plan, I'll just go to the resolutions. Therefore, be it resolved that council reverse its May 8th, 2017 decision, which added the approximately 1.5-kilometer piece of 216th Street and 88th Avenue south to the New Highway One interchange to the township's master transportation plan as a truck route. And be it resolved that council inform TransLink that the stretch of 216th Street between 88th Avenue south to the New Highway One interchange, approximately 1.5 kilometers, is to be removed from the MRN road network, as it will not be a truck route. And further, be it resolved that when the bylaw to amend the master transportation plan truck route comes to council for approval, the public hearing to allow public input be specifically included in this process. I so move.
Thank you. So prior to taking a second, and I've had a lot of discussion with our CEO on this motion, it is certainly a worthy motion. However, I have to go back to the procedural bylaw that's, that we run our meetings by. And the first two parts of the motion, there's three parts to it, basically constituted reconsideration on an item where action has been taken. And so in that regard, I have to have no choice but to rule it out of order. The, the first part has been, has been discussed by council. Motion was made. Action was taken by having the public information meeting, by having a statutory notice to other agencies, and so that part has been done. The second part, basically, it's asking that, that the truck would be removed, while it hasn't been added yet. Certainly, when this does come forward to council for bylaw readings, council does have the opportunity at that time to make any changes, amendments, deletions, additions, whatever they wish, but at this time, it's out of order. The third portion certainly is in order, and so with that, the third portion I would certainly consider, but the first two paragraphs, I have no choice but to rule out of order. So with that, any, the seconder, so then the seconder on the third portion, then would be councillor Davis. So on the, on that portion, which is to be resolved that when the bylaw to amend the master transportation plan truck route comes to council for approval, public hearing to allow public input be specifically included, this process is now on the table. So councillor Fox.
Question, would, when a bylaw comes forward like that, it would come to first and second reading, and would there not be a natural public hearing anyway?
For this, for this particular bylaw, it would be first, second, the process that we generally follow is a first, second, and third reading, and then the next meeting a fourth reading. Is that correct, Mr. Backen?
That's correct, your worship. Because the bylaw's regulatory in nature, it would automatically have a public hearing, so the motion is in order as it's requiring a public hearing.
That's right. So, so then council could at that time, or any time, as this motion is, is asking, put in the, the, you know, request that public input, similar to public hearing, be part of that bylaw process. And that has been, there is a history that has happened in the past, so council has a discussion, so I hope that answers your question.
But do we need to have a motion, or could we make that at the time of the bylaw coming forward, the first and second?
It can be done at the time the bylaws come forward, and it can be done at any time you can, during the time the bylaws come forward. Councillor Sparrow.
Okay. It can be done at the time the bylaws come forward, at first and second, but it can also be done tonight.
We can make that motion now that, when the bylaws come forward, as a same state, or this could be deferred. We can make that, uh, motion now that, when the bylaws come, as the same states, or this could be deferred, whichever council decides.
Well, I'm, I'm fine to support it now as, um, as requiring that when first and second, so it would be first and second reading, and then going to a public hearing, just as we've-
Be first, second, and third, and then a public input. It's-
Or public.
Mr. Bakken, what have we done in the past with these sorts of things? Because it is not, not our usual practice. To, okay, so would we have first, second, and third, and then before, fourth reading, or would we do first, second?
We would proceed with first and second.
Okay.
And then we would, we'd probably move division if the matter came forward and have first and second reading, um, then hold off on third, and then introduce the amendment that there be a public hearing.
Okay.
Style meeting.
Okay, but if we're dealing with this motion right now on the floor, it would be to require that we have first and second reading, and then we have a public hearing, uh, or a public hearing style meeting to, uh, before third and final reading, is that what I'm understanding? If we pass this motion right now?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so, um-
So motion's on the table.
Sorry, you're, uh, you're just, I'm getting a phone call, so it kind of just threw me off there, sorry, sorry.
Didn't take it.
Yes, no, you're, yeah, so I'm gonna support, uh, Counselor Richter's motion. I think that, um, uh, that I would like to, to hear from the public on that. And I want to just clarify as well, again, that was mentioned before, but that we've, this has, um, not been included as a truck route. At this point, we've just sent it for public input, um, which we've had those, um, the public input sessions. So now, before the bylaw is, uh, adopted by council, we're gonna have a, a, an actual public hearing style meeting for them to provide input for us. And at that point, we can make any changes, um, that we so chose from the, the input from the community. So, um, I'm gonna support this to just sort of, um, set the groundwork out for it to be, uh, done in this matter, and, um, I think we can do that tonight, and not wait till first and second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Long.
Yeah, well, it sounds to me, your worship, that it's getting even more confusing as we go forward. First of all, there, there's an expectation, I think, even of the public tonight, your worship, and many of us on council, that this, this motion somehow will take the truck route away, whereas we haven't even seen any bylaws yet that, that designated to a, to a truck route. So, what kind of timing, your worship, through you to staff, would we be looking at for those bylaws to potentially come back? Because the danger, well, not the danger, but the fear I have is making a decision tonight on something that's gonna happen maybe a year from now may not be the wisest way to make a decision. So, what kind of timing are we looking at?
Your worship, the matter has been referred to TransLink for their input. Quite frequently, TransLink will undertake a study or some sort of analysis to determine if it's appropriate, then respond to us. That response will form the basis of our bylaws. Rough timeframe, depending, totally dependent upon TransLink, but it could easily be, uh, six months to a year.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the, uh, the interchange constructed first, before we even really make that decision on whether it should be a truck route or not. I think we need to get all the groundwork done, which is what the motion that we, that you, you know, we talked about earlier on, has already been passed. That the information be sent to TransLink for their study, but I think, uh, any further decisions, you do, you should be waiting until, uh, the response comes from TransLink. And I'd like to see the, the thing built first, uh, so I don't, I don't know how long that's gonna take. But anyway, all of this to say, I, I don't really support, uh, making a motion tonight about it. Um, but there is plenty of opportunity when it comes back as a bylaw, and that's probably, well, for sure, is a more appropriate place to be making, uh, any decisions on this truck route, is when the bylaws come before us, because who knows what else will be included with those bylaws, we really don't know.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think, uh, this is a, um, a, a good time to make a decision that, uh, we're gonna take this to public, uh, public hearing opportunity. Um, we may not know exactly what those bylaws look like, but we know that we have a number of, um, people that are very concerned. And so I think to indicate to them today that when those bylaws do come forward, there's going to be plenty of opportunity for public input, and that council, uh, will have an opportunity to hear that input, and will be able to make a decision at that point. To provide that level of assuredness today, I think is important, and I don't think we should wait six months to a year to see what's built and then decide. I think we're just guaranteeing to the public today that there will be a public hearing opportunity whenever those bylaws do come forward for us, and that this is not, uh, a decision that has already been made by council, that the opportunity will come. So I think this is a perfect night to do that.
Thank you. Counselor Qualley?
Uh, thanks, I think, um, to, you know, thanks for the comments, Counselor Whitmarsh. I think this will maybe, um, put some of the stuff to rest in the community, uh, around, um, what is actually happening in the process. And, uh, we're, we're nowhere close to passing these bylaws that will, uh, instate the truck route. And, um, there's still an opportunity, I think, for the public to have some conversation around this. Uh, but the construction period, I think, is late two thousand nineteen, for when the interchange actually finally opened. So, we do have a bit of time on this, and we've certainly heard from the public, and I expect we'll continue to hear from them. But hopefully, this will clear up, uh, some of the confusion around where we're at in the process, that, um, this is nowhere near being finalized as, as a truck route. We're still waiting for the information to come back from, uh, TransLink and, um, the actual bylaw that will decide whether it's a truck route or not. So, hopefully, this'll, um, uh, provide the community with, uh, the inform, or the input that they've been looking for on this. And, um, you know, that, let them know that, that we've heard from them, and, um, I'm sure we'll continue to hear from them. But, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll support the motion, because I think, uh, um, we need to, uh, to move to the next place and sort of be really clear on where we are in this process.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, I, I'd like to say that I do support this as well. I think it's, um, really helpful for us to consider the uncertainty factor, and for the community's sake, to create some kind of framework so that they know that sometime in the future, there's gonna be an occasion where they can go and, uh, at a public hearing to express their concerns. And so, I just want to say thank you to Counselor Richter for bringing this forward, because I do think in this instance, it's good to be proactive, and as I say, to give some direction to our discussion going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Well, I'm very disappointed you've ruled part of this out of order, but, um, I think it's important that we assure the public that there will be an opportunity for public input from them, that we will hear them, we will listen to them. And, uh, I, for one, am a little concerned about TransLink's study, because I understand that the person working on the study of TransLink is the same person who wrote the letter on behalf of the B.C. Truckers Association specifying that this should be a truck route. And, uh, that to me is a major conflict of interest.
Excuse me, could I have order, please? We're having discussion here, thank you.
I, uh, I really think that the public has made it quite clear where they stand on this. Uh, last, uh, meeting, they delivered a, an eighteen-hundred name petition to us, saying they don't want it. I, I guess they just have to come back and tell us one more time that they don't want it.
Thank you. Counselor Fox?
Well, I don't know if I'm gonna get yelled at, or if I'm gonna have a chance to speak.
Got order here, this is-
Okay.
Your, your time.
So, one thing that I want to do is I'd like to have staff, um, collate any comments, thoughts that came forward out of the public information session, and have those presented to us, uh, either through information, or whatever the case may be. Because, uh, the feedback sheets were there, the, uh, for the public information session. And in fact, I had some good discussions with some individuals there, who actually had some ideas and thoughts relative to how, you know, aspects of the, of that, uh, whole corridor could be, uh, there's things that could be done in that corridor to actually slow traffic down, and so on and so forth, and I recommended that they put them on the paper, on the feedback form, and put it in, because that way staff would hear that, uh, and see it, and could be part of a, a staff information, uh, report coming forward to us. Because I think there are some ideas that some of the citizens shared with, with me, and possibly with other councillors at that public information center, uh, session, that were very valid, and, uh, had, had a lot of merit, and could be part of a solution, um, in, in the bigger picture here. So, I think the, um, public information session, I have no, or public, uh, hearing, I have no problem with that. But I think that we need to hear, uh, have that staff, uh, collated information back to us, if we could, maybe through you to Mr. Seffy.
It's Bakken, take that as direction. Thank you. Thank you, and Counselor Long?
I just wanted to reiterate, your worship, I think that council might be playing a bit of a game against itself. We know very clearly what the folks want. They don't want the, the interchange to have, uh, it's, you know, have that route right by their houses. I mean, and I understand it, and I get that. I mean, so why would you build all false expectations? This is a project that we really have no control over in that respect, and if we don't designate that part of a, a truck route, we're just gonna lose a pile of money. So, I mean, and first of all, the, the bylaws are not even before us, so I just, uh, want to say that I'm not gonna support this, because I don't want to build false expectations by everybody. We've had a, a lot of discussion already on it, and, uh, we'll see when the bylaws come forward, where we would move to from there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Now I'll call the question on N1. And carries with Counselor Long opposed. Is there any other business? Counselor Richter?
I have two notices of motion. Uh, the first one, whereas tandem parking has caused many problems with on-street parking in the township, be it resolved that council directs staff to bring forward the necessary bylaw amendments to eliminate tandem parking in multifamily and other zones. My second one is whereas the township is one of the few municipalities that currently does not have a township-wide tree protection bylaw, and where trees are an important environmental asset in this community, therefore be it resolved that the Brookswood-Fernridge tree bylaw be applied to all of the township.
Thank you, any other business? Okay, so at this point, we would move back to, um, the, uh, what are we looking at here? Bylaws for third reading, and that's H2, and then L1, but I would ask council, because we have a, a public hearing, and there may be people who wish to speak to that, and the other part of our business may take some time, that we have a motion to adjourn to after the public hearing. We will then commence the public hearing, and then go back to the main meeting. So Counselor Long moves it, Counselor Davis seconds it. So show of hands, all those in favor of adjournment, opposed, and that's carried. So now we're gonna, this part of the meeting's adjourned till we finish the public hearing. We'll go into the public hearing, we'll just take a few minutes for, uh, staff. All right, so now we're reconvening the regular evening meeting of township of Atlantic Council. And the next item on the agenda is H2. This is a Brookswood-Fernridge community plan, bylaw number five-three-zero-zero and five-three-zero-one. Um, I would ask that council, that we divide this, and council first move bylaw five-three-zero-zero. We don't need division if we just move one at a time, so you can just move five-three-zero-zero, uh, separately. Oh, okay, sorry. So, who's, who's, just, um, Madam Clerk, uh, we don't need to move division if it's not on the floor, so we can just move one at a time, is that correct?
That's right, if the question is not on the floor, we can move it, we can take each one separately.
That's right, so we'll take each one separately. Yeah, so, okay, Counselor Long moves it, Counselor Fox seconds fifty-three-hundred? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, so we're gonna deal with fifty-three-hundred first. I, um, I, I do want to make, uh, the, this is, um, uh, certainly a bylaw that, uh, has gone through a lengthy process, and, uh, certainly appreciate all the work that everyone's had. Uh, so at this point, we'll be, uh, going through, um, our debate and discussions, and possibly a few amendments. And so, just to help council through this, because I, I think, from what I understand, there'll be a few amendments. So we go through the amendments first, and, uh, and once the amendments, once we've all had a, an opportunity to put the amendments on, discuss the amendments, vote the amendments, we'll then go to the main motion as amended. Uh, I don't want to take away, uh, because our procedural bylaw allows for, uh, a member of council to speak twice on any motion. Uh, the fact that you put an amendment on the floor won't be considered a time that you speak to the motion. It's a time to put an amendment on the floor, so that when we're all done, we still all have a full two times to speak. So, uh, so hopefully that's clear. I also, um, been looking at how to deal with this, because it's complex, there's, there's a lot going on. And, uh, we'll just take the, um, the speaker's list as it is, rather than going, uh, at one point, I thought going through section by section, but that might be too cumbersome. But certainly let council speak, and, uh, if they have amendments to put on, then certainly to, to move them. And I'm gonna start by, um, moving, uh, the amendment that staff have recommended, as, um, the language to strengthen, uh, single-family two, uh, single-family three, and those policies, there's another five slides that staff have, so I believe that's clear to, to council. Uh, the language that was provided to council by way of memo, um, and is on table in front of us, so. I would move that as the first amendment, not the first amendment is United States, but the first amendment tonight. Could I have a second, please?
Sorry, so we're not gonna, we're gonna just go right into amendments?
We're just, yeah, we'll go right into amendments, and then we'll have a discussion, because there's gonna be lots of amendments, so. So I've moved that amendment, Counselor Whitmarsh has seconded it, so we have the first amendment on the floor, and that's to deal with these, the, the language, so. Counselor Sparrow?
I'm gonna creatively, uh, word my comments around the amendments, just because I kind of, I just, I just basically wanted to just start by, just as saying to council, I, I hope, I mean, we had a very lengthy, um, presentation by staff, uh, in the afternoon meeting, which is a lot of information. Um, this has clearly been a long process, um, right from the beginning for, um, the public as well, starting over a year ago. And now we're sort of at the point where we're, is, it's our turn to kind of have a discussion about it. I just hope that we can have that discussion tonight, but I feel really uncomfortable with the, the, the thought that we're gonna be asked to vote and, uh, give this third reading tonight. I feel like we've had a lot of information. We're gonna have a lot more information tonight, a lot of ideas and amendments, and, and I just really am concerned that we're gonna find ourselves in a spot of going through and dissecting all this all in one night, and then, and then at the end, um, the expectation that we're gonna give a third reading. So I'm just gonna put that out there to the rest of council, that I think we can have a really fruitful discussion and, and have our chance to kind of get into, into this. But I would hope maybe that there's gonna be some more period for reflection, or some more period for us to even, um, hear from the public, if that is, if we've got it right. Because I think this is a big decision, this is something that's gonna guide our community for many, many years, and I don't feel like we need to rush into things. And I know that that, I've said this before, and there's the comment that it, we haven't rushed. This has been a long process, has been many, many years in the making, but I think if we're at this point, we should put the extra effort in to get this right, than to, to find ourselves pushing it along to, to finish. So I just want to put that out there.
That's perfect, okay. I will say that, uh, we have a lot of tools in the toolbox as far as how to deal with motions. However, this is our procedure and our process, is that motion's on the floor, uh, it's then quite appropriate for council to move amendments. And I understand there will be some amendments, and we can go through those, we take our time, make sure, you know, everybody gets, uh, appropriate amount of, you know, whatever they want to speak to it, under a procedural bylaw. Once that's all done, then there's a time to deal with the, with the, uh, motion as amended, and there are tools to defer, uh, to another date. There's, uh, all kinds of tools we can use, but that's up to council, so.
Yeah, so I just, that's great. I just wanted to sort of start the conversation that way.
Fair enough, we, I want to make sure that everyone has their opportunity to speak. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Um, yeah, so, um, are we, right now, we are looking at the revisions that have been recommended to us by staff for, uh, single-family two, single-family three?
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at?
All, all-
And it's all together?
All together, that's correct. No, the move, new move division, that's fine, uh, okay, Counselor Richter moves division, Counselor Fox seconds it. So we're gonna go through, there's five slides, we go through each slide separately, we'll do each one separately, so then, uh, so we'll go to the first, is this the first slide? Okay, so, um, we'll take a show of hands, all those in favor of division, opposed, carried. Okay, so, slide, single-family two, uh, any discussion on that? Uh, Counsel, Counselor Whitmarsh at the, at the floor?
Uh, no, my, my comments are for, uh, single-family three, I have an amendment there.
Counselor Richter, on single-family two?
Uh, yeah, and I think mine are more around single-family three as well, too. But, um, I did want to specify the percent of single-family two that would end up being seven-thousand-square-foot lots, as opposed to ten-thousand.
Okay, so we need to make a amendment?
Well, I, I, I don't know, I'd like to ask, I mean, staff said with single-family three, they were looking at about ten percent. I'm just wondering what they're looking at on single-family two.
Uh, I know, uh, Mr. Seffy, uh, I know you're not looking at it, but what, what is, um, what, what is a percentage of, you know, this would be for clustering at seven-thousand-square-foot lots, and single-family two, is there a percentage, uh, maximum percentage that would, that would work in this plan, to make sure that we have a, an account?
It's similar to the, uh, single-family three designation, your worship, ten percent, approximately.
So Counselor Richter, if you wish to make that- So Counselor Richter, if you wish to make that amendment to the amendment.
I'd like to add that amendment, I'm not quite sure where to go in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you want to, what would be the word, what would be the appropriate wording, Mr. Seffi, to make that amendment, to get the intention?
After 10,000 feet squared, to a maximum of 10% of land use coverage, to be determined through the more detailed.
Okay, that would do it. Thanks, Charlie.
I'll second that.
So where are the words, so?
Right out to the bracket of 10,000 square foot, so it's defining the minimum size, and, no.
Your Worship, it, it may be more appropriate to have it as a number five in the policies that would then describe or limit the maximum number of lots that can be developed to less than 10,000, to no more than 10% of that area of the plan designated as Single Family 2.
Okay, so under number five, so we could take that as the amendment, and that, that matches it. Is that okay with you, Counselor Richter? That work? Okay, so it's seconded by Counselor Fox.
Oh, Lloyd, do you have a question about it?
Okay, so.
So is it stronger as a policy, or is it stronger in the wording that Counselor Fox had suggested?
Mr. Seffi?
Well, I think, Your Worship, the, the policy is intended to provide more clarity and definition, so I think the policy provisions would be stronger in terms of future interpretation.
Okay.
Thank you. Someone open up amendment number two, because it's amendment to the amendment. Any discussion on the 10% for Single Family 2, and adding it as number five? Counselor Qualley?
I don't, I, I don't understand the 10%. I mean, I, I understand that's what Mr. Seffi said, but I, I, I'm struggling with the amount, because this gives the flexibility. I keep going back to the intent of this whole document, and the intent of the whole document is, um, um, sorry, I lost my notes here. The intent of the whole document is that it's visionary and not restrictive. So I, I feel like we're just adding some restrictions in immediately, so anyhow, I'm not sure about the 10%. This thing's going to be with us for a really long time, so anyhow, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure about the, if I can support the 10%.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Well, let's hear the wording of the amendment, because I, I believe what I've heard is that 10% is what staff estimated it to be, to keep up with the, the cap population, so then this is just confirming it, I would gather.
Ms. Bauer, if you, or when you're ready, if you could read the amendment to the amendment.
Can we see it on the screen?
No, I don't think that one's on the screen.
He says with a grin.
Ms. Bauer.
That the maximum number of lots that can be developed at less than 10, 10,000 square feet be a maximum of 10% of the land use coverage for, in Single Family 2.
Awkward, isn't it?
So what it's saying is that it shall not exceed 10% of the, of the area, and, and I understand staff are comfortable with that based on real preliminary review. Okay, so I mean, I can support that, because the calculation that was used to come up with the figure was 10%, so now we're saying, let's get some clarity in it, the 10% isn't actually mentioned in the, in the document, but it was given to us as the rationale for the figure to come up. So I think I'm comfortable with putting that in the document, so people know where we're starting.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Excuse me, Your Worship, I don't know if I heard the words "shall not exceed 10%." I heard it say "shall be 10%," that wouldn't be quite what we're after here.
Bill Noddy, yeah, we don't want to. Yeah, thank you. That was the intent of the motion, wasn't it, Counselor Fox? And Counselor Richter? Thanks. Okay. Okay, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, so this, this particular area, Single Family 2, you know, I certainly have some concerns about too many lots being below the 10,000 square feet. But, you know, I also, I, I'm a bit struggling here a little bit, because I have an amendment that I'm thinking of, which is for Single Family 3, and it has different kind of wording. And the only reason I'm suggesting that is it seems to me that if we're going to have that, the wording should be similar in both places of SF, SF2 and NSF3. And I know this is a bit premature, but then the wording will be different, and it could possibly be, if the motion that I'm presenting was to pass, or that amendment was to be passed, the wording would be different, which would, might seem a little awkward, and so...
What's your wording?
Well, I can, this is actually for SF3, we could adjust it for SF2 as well, but I just, I can give you a copy, but the concept for, in SF3, was that there would be a fourth in the, they're, of course, they're dealing with different sizes, but 4,000 square feet would be a maximum of 5%, and then at 5,000 square feet, a maximum of 5%, which would be more specific, and I think you could do something similar in this zone of SF2 with 7,000 and, for example, 8,000. And you'd have similar wording, then.
Motion, I think the motion, just.
Counselor Whitmarsh.
I, I think with the wording that we have for SF2 can certainly be used for the motion, I know you have it written out, but I believe that would still, it's very similar, so I think if we start with this one, then you just adapt your wording to, to what SF2 is, it'll, they'll be consistent, I think if that's a concern of consistency. However, this is the amendment that's on the floor, so.
Okay.
Okay, and then we just adapt your wording to it, so that, it's a good point to keep consistency. Okay, so, so I'm going to call the question on the amendment to the amendment, and that's, I guess everyone will be labeled H2, is that correct, Ms. Bauer? Yep. Okay, so I've called the question on the amendment to the amendment, and that's the 10%, the 10% rule. That carries unanimously. So we're now back to the main motion, which is the SF2 as amended. Is there any further discussion on the language with the amendment? If not, I'm going to call the question on the SF2, Single Family 2. That carries unanimously. So now, the second part of the divided motion is Single Family 3, and I think Counselor Whit, I'm going to clear, okay, Counselor Whitmarsh had that amendment ready to go, so Counselor Whitmarsh, you're on the floor.
Okay, so my, my, the amendment, and there's a whereas here, but I think basically the, the amendment is that there'd be a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet, would be a maximum of 5% of the total land area per neighborhood, and then a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, a maximum 5% of total land area per neighborhood. That's my amendment.
So I'll wait for Ms. Bauer to have the language, read it, and then I'll get, get a seconder so that we can have a similar language to SF2. And she can read it out.
The amendment would read that the minimum lot size, 371.6 meter squared, 4,000 feet squared, maximum 5% of the total land area per neighborhood, their minimum lot size of 464.5 meter squared or 5,000 feet, feet squared, minimum 5% of the total lot area per neighborhood.
Maximum, not minimum.
Excellent, excellent, okay.
And it should say "shall be."
Okay, so we're, we're clear on that, on the amendment to the amendment. Counselor Qualley seconds it. So Counselor Whitmarsh wishes to speak to it first, go ahead, Counsel, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Can we divide it?
Your Worship, can we correct the screen, this is not, this is not what we're talking about.
No, we're not, sorry, we're on to SF, oh, that is, so that'll be, so what you're doing is adding it as a policy number.
It'd be an additional paragraph or policy number in SF3. Can we speak to it?
Sure, speak to it.
So, the reason I, I'm wanting to divide this into two, rather than just having the 10%, is that, you know, I think there was some expressions made at the public hearing that some suggested 5,000 square feet as a minimum, and, and yet I do see the, some value for tree protection, or for on arterial roads, or buffering between ALR or maybe commercial centers, as, where some 4,000 square foot lots, some, might be helpful in planning and, and good, good planning as we move forward. And so, this would allow us, and allow some flexibility, but limit it to a maximum of 5% of that area, where you could actually be smaller than 5,000 square feet. And then, of course, you could have larger than 5,000 square feet, could be another 5%. So the essence of it is 10% for anything below 7,000 square feet, but it would cap that number in half for below 5,000. So I think it fits well for those that wanted 5,000, but it also fits well for allowing the flexibility of good planning. And that number of 10% works well, because it really is what matches the, the sort of vision of 39,000 people living in, in Brookswood-Fernridge is tied to these numbers of sort of 10%. And so that's how we manage to, sort of manage the population growth, is through this kind of process, so I move this.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
To me, it lacks clarity, because what about 6,000 square foot lots?
I believe it's included as 5,000.
Because it says minimum 5,000, so 5 to 7,000 is 5%.
Minimum 5,000, okay. So, but it should basically be very clear, like the last one, that no more than 10% of the total SF3 area will be less than 7,000 square foot lots.
I'll ask Mr. Seffi, as he's the one who will be administering this plan for the next 25 years, the wording and the language, if, if, if it is, if it passes, but.
I think the audience have their doubts as to.
Yeah, how long you'll be working here?
My ability to administer this.
Want to make sure the language assists you, and if it's, the concerns that have been raised by Counselor Richter, if language is adequate.
The language is adequate, Your Worship, and, and I think for consistency, which, which Counselor Whitmarsh referenced earlier, and, and Your Worship agreed to, we would, we would try and replicate the language that counsel approved as part of the First Amendment regarding Single Family 2, and try and, and, again, replicate that for Single Family 3, based on a further split of the 4,000 versus the 5,000, having them to not exceed 10,000, 10% of the total area per neighborhood overall.
Five percent, is it four to five?
Collectively, not to exceed 10%, yeah, five and five.
Yes, that's right, I get that, thank you.
Okay, now, I'm still on my speaking turn here. I'd like to divide this, because I think the public was very clear, they didn't want any 4,000 square foot lots, period.
Fair enough. Excuse me, I would ask that the audience allow us to have our debate, this is our turn, so, and, and please honor that. So Counselor Richter moves a division of the amendment. Is there a seconder? Counselor Arneson seconds it, so I'll open up, sorry, we first have to have the motion to divide. Any discussion on the motion to divide? Counselor Long?
No.
Okay, so on the motion to divide, I.
The unanimous consent thing?
No, I'm going to do a vote on this, this, we're going to go through slowly on this whole process, so. I, I basically like the way that Counselor Whitmarsh has it laid out, and I think it adds a lot of clarity, so I'm not going to support the motion to divide, because I think we have a good there, and then we end up with a five and a five, not a 10. So with that, I'm going to ask for, I'll call the question on division. And division passes, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor, or Mayor Fros opposed, so we'll now go to discuss the 5% for the 4,000 square, square foot lots, so I have to open amendment 2 for that, I believe. Counselor Long?
Okay, first of all, Your Worship, I like the idea of the wording being "not exceed", all right, I mean, it's, it's semantics to some extent, but it's, that's what we used in the previous one, that it would not exceed a maximum, would not exceed 5% of the, of the area. Dividing into two, well, okay, we're doing that now, so I mean, I heard, I heard both sides of that argument, that there was a lot of affordability issues, that 4,000 square foot lots, or even smaller, if you look at Cedar, Cedar River, Cedar Creek, excuse me, is 3,500 square foot lots, and the folks there are very happy. I'm not suggesting we go there, but I mean, there was, there was definitely a demonstration of the need of a variety of, of sizes of lots, and 5,000, 4,000, both would should be considered. This amendment with the not exceeding 5%, I think takes care of a huge amount of concern where everyone thought originally, perhaps not everyone, but I certainly looked at the map and saw how much of it was yellow, which is SP3, and thought, my gosh, if, you know, everybody in there is going to go for a 4,000 square foot lot. So this limits it considerably by saying it will not exceed 5% of the whole area. So to me, I think that addresses the needs of both, and I'm going to support both, but we're doing it one at a time.
Thank you. Counselor Sparrow?
I, I appreciate the 5% maximum, but I feel like the 4,000 square feet, foot lots are just too small, and so I'm going to not support this amendment, I think that, that the clustering and the, the provisions for, for retaining the buffers and the tree space can be done with a little bit larger lot that's more in keeping with, with the area, so I'm not going to support the 4,000 square foot.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Worship. I, I agree with Counselor Sparrow and some other counselors who have spoken. I think we heard loud and clear, the 4,000 square foot lots were not something that was acceptable, not by 100% of the individuals, because there is a balance to be struck. However, I don't personally believe that the, the clustering rationale necessarily equates to a 4,000 square foot lot. It could, my preference, although it's not stated here, and we could, we could do it. I want to be prescriptive, but I'm not necessarily buying into a percentage, because I personally think it needs to be done on a case-by-case basis within the neighborhood plans, just based on what it is that you are purporting to save. So I, I think that I'm, I'm not going to be supportive of the 4,000 square foot lots.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the 5% for 4,000? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question on that. And that fails with Counselor Richter, Counselor Fox, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Sparrow, Counselor Davis opposed. So now we'll go on to the 5%, to the second part, which is 5% of the area would be 5,000 square foot lots, and I have a speaker's list here. Counselor Fox is on the list.
I'd move that ma, maximum to 10%.
Okay, so you amend, amend the amendment to move the, 10% of 5,000 to 7,000 square foot for clustering, okay, so. Is there a seconder?
Say that again?
He's moving, he's moving an amendment to change the 5% to 10% for 5,000 to 7,000 square foot clustering.
Seconder on the amendment?
Yes. Counselor Whitmarsh seconds, seconds that amendment, I'll open up amendment 2. So discussion on, now this would be amended to 10%, be the 5 to 7, okay, right? And the language, could you read that amendment?
That the additional policy condition, I believe, would include maximum lot size 4,604.5 meter squared, or 5,000, 5,000 feet squared, to max, I'm sorry, try again, 4,6, 464.5 meter squared, or 5,000 feet squared, to a maximum of 10% of the total land area per neighborhood.
So that's what's on the floor, discussion on that. Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on, on that amendment to the amendment. And that carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Sparrow, Counselor Davis opposed. So now, we move to the amendment as amendment, as amended, that's a Single Family 2, with the staff language that has been recommended, and that, the 10% on 5,000 square foot lot. So discussion on that, let's see, no further discussion on the amendment as amended, or Counselor, Counselor Fox, here, oh, yeah, there, Counselor Fox, trying to get back.
Are we, we're voting on, on just Single Family 3 right now?
Sorry, Single Family, no, Single Family 3, that's right, sorry.
And we've made them as amended?
As amended, yep.
Okay.
As amended to 10,000, 5,000, be the minimum lot size.
Okay.
Okay?
As amended, that 10%.
10%.
Of that.
That.
The language is the same as SF2?
Yes, 10% limiting 5,000, okay? Real clear on that? Call the question. That carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Sparrow, Counselor Davis That carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Arnison, Counsel Sparrow, Counsel Davis opposed, so that carries, so now.
Your Worship, before you move on to the next issue, may I request a confirmation or clarification?
Yes.
That what just, what just, what Counsel just approved was to essentially eliminate the 4,000 square foot provision, which means that other sections of the plan that make reference to the 4,000 are also by extension being eliminated or revised to suit.
Revised, so what would be appropriate motion to accommodate that, so we could do a blanket, that where 4,000 square foot is, is referenced to is changed to 5,000, something like that? Mr. Backen?
That's effectively correct, Your Worship, that the remainder of the plan where it references 4,000 square foot lots be changed to 5,000 square foot lots.
So Counsel Whitmarsh, it was your, do you want to make that amendment?
I will make that amendment.
Okay, so, is there a second or to that? So basically, it's to make the plan consistent with the new direction that Counsel has just approved to replace 4,000 with 5,000. So could I have a second or? We have to make, oh, Counsel Arnison seconds it. I'm going to have to clear the queue. Any discussion on that? So I'm going to call the question, are we, we're clear on the question? Okay, H2.
Yes.
So this is basically, because we've changed from 4,000 to 5,000, that now the language
Language in here, it means to be changed.
The document needs to reference 5,000, so we need to update that language to be consistent with what we just passed, okay? It's more kind of like housekeeping. Okay, so that carries, Counsel Richter opposed, so now, so now we're, we've completed that language change, correct? And with the amendments. So now we move on to other amendments, Counsel Qualley?
Thank you, so you said we're not working in any particular order, so...
No, I think it would be easier just to go by council member, if you have your amendments, put them on, we'll just work, work our way down that way.
So I would like to make an amendment or a motion to amend that the Cedar Creek Mobile Home Park, both the designation and zoning, remain exactly as it is in the 1987 community plan.
Okay, so moved by Counsel Qualley, seconded by Counsel Sparrow. Yes, and so I'll just, yeah.
Sure, I wrote it down.
Yeah, if we have...
Oh, more handouts.
The whole thing?
Does it?
The whole part. Is exactly as it is in 1987.
And Ms. Bauer, do you have the written motion? So I think just for everyone here, could you please read out the amendment?
That the Cedar Creek Mobile Home Park designation and zoning be left as it is in the 1987 official community plan.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy, is that language, you know, we're putting in the document, the language sufficient?
The language is sufficient, Your Worship, I don't think that what zoning needs to be in there, because the committee plan does not make reference to zoning, however, it doesn't hurt to have it there.
Okay, have the zoning there, okay. Okay, so with that, then Counsel Qualley, did you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, the only reason that I left that in there is because there was confusion about it being rezoned or not, and so I'm happy that he's agreeing to leave it in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Richter?
I think the wording is problematic. Maybe it's not, but perhaps Mr. Seffy can clarify, what exactly is its designation in the 1987 community plan? I don't think its designation is manufactured home park, and it should be manufactured home park.
The designation is single family, I believe it's 7,000 square foot lots, and I believe, at least my discussions is that, I've heard a lot of residents of Cedar, Cedar Creek Mobile Home Park basically say they were afraid of the changes, and the change, the major change was that a portion of it would go to multifamily. So by leaving it the same, there's no change, it's been that way since 1987, most, a lot of them probably moved in since that time, I'm not sure, but we're, we're listening to them and saying, okay, we're not going to change it, this is basically under what you were used to, we're not changing that, basically taking away the multifamily.
Yeah, but, but what I heard a lot of them ask us for in the public hearing was to give them the same protection that we've given the other four manufactured home parks, and that is to designate this mobile home park as a mobile home park, like the other four.
Certainly, that, that would be an appropriate motion, this one's on the floor.
Okay, but can we amend this? No, I suppose we have to...
Deal with this motion, and, and then we would go to the next motion if, if this fails. Counsel Long?
Yeah, well, I guess we'll have to vote on it now, but I would, I would say the same thing, what I heard was very clear that it should be designated MH1. At one point, there was talking about splitting it up into two different zones, which I think that would be even more problematic perhaps, but I would, I would support that, so I guess I really would have to vote against this and see if there's a, a desire to switch it to MH1.
Mr. Seffy?
Your Worship, again, this is not a matter of zoning, the committee plan is dealing with designation. The zoning doesn't change.
If I said zoning, I didn't mean to say that, maybe that's because it's on here, the designation in the plan would be MH1, my apologies.
So, and in terms of the, the existing 1987 plan, the designation of the manufactured home park is Single Family Three. As you can see on this slide here, the 2017 designation contemplates a mixed designation of both Single Family at the western end of, of the parcel, and Townhouse Row House at the eastern end of the parcel. And I understand the motion to be to retain the existing 1987 designation, which would then be essentially all of this parcel remaining yellow, as opposed to having two colors of yellow and, and mustard.
Your Worship, just before I, you know, the floor, but I'd like an opportunity to, to present something, perhaps if this doesn't go, because I have a motion in mind here.
Certainly, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question by you two staff. If, if, my understanding is that the other mobile home parks that we've referred to in, in their, in the 1987 plan, as well as this one, are designated as MH1. The difference in this one is that this plan, or this mobile home park is currently designated as Single Family, and if we were to change the designation of this to mobile home, that it could significantly impact the value of the property to the owner of that property, is that correct?
Your Worship, I am not a real estate sort of expert in terms of the, the valuation, in terms of appraisal. Having said that, I understand that a higher designation, if you will, something that would accommodate a higher use in terms of a future potential, does have the potential to add value to a property, that's generally the case. So having a designation that is consistent with the 87 plan would retain that, that potential theoretical evaluation, and having something other than that in terms of a lower density will then, by extrapolation, would reduce the potential valuation, and having it at a higher density could, in theory, again, increase the valuation of the property.
Okay, so of, of these, so is it, is it correct that of the five mobile home parks that we've talked about, this is the only one that is designated in the 87 plan as Single Family?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Qualley, oh, sorry, Counsel Qualley.
Thanks.
Okay, Counsel Richter?
Well, I just wanted to say that basically everything we're doing with this plan is changing property values, so I don't buy the property valuation business as an argument. But in the 1987 plan, were the other four manufactured home parks designated as manufactured home parks?
That's correct, Your Worship.
So that's what we should be doing with this one, because it's no different than the other four. Yeah, so we should vote this amendment down and put Counsel Long's on.
Okay, that's, that's a fair comment. I, I'm going to support this amendment, because as I said, I think this is a compromise, there is multifamily and, and single family, and what I heard was the fear of change, and this remains the same, and, and it works well with the adjacent property. Counsel Qualley, you wish to speak?
Sorry, yeah, I, I do. I think, you know, the rationale for this motion is what I heard from the public hearing was that people wanted things left as they were, from the 1987 plan, they wanted it exactly as it was. I think Counsel has built in over the last couple of years, a lot of safeguards in all of our policies around the protection of the people who live in the mobile home parks, which is far and away offers a lot more protection in the long run, I think, so that's the rationale for this change, was to provide the exact same level of security that they've had the entire time of the 1987 plan, in conjunction with all of our policies that protect the people who live in those mobile home parks, regardless of whether they are in Brookswood or in Murrayville or in Walnut Grove, the same protection applies to all of them.
Thank you. Counsel Arnison?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Well, I, I'm really struck by the fact that at the very minimum, I suppose it would be acceptable just to keep it as it is, but I really prefer to give it to the zoning that will protect it, and MH1 is certainly the designation that I'd like to go with. I, I think that it would ease a, a lot of the stress and the concerns, I think the community spoke loud and clear that that is what they would find to be the optimum solution, so I'm not going to support the status quo, I'm going to support trying to go forward and giving them more protection for the future.
Thank you, Counsel Long?
Your Worship, the 1987 plan didn't give them certainty, because I think we heard concerns long before we even got into this process of the OCP update. We had people coming, I think, coming to us way back then, the park's been there for a number of years, and there's always been a concern, so you've got five parks in Brookswood, one of them isn't, isn't designated neighborhood, or MH1, I think it should be designated.
Okay, so you know further discussion, I'm going to call a question for H2, or for, sorry, for this amendment, it's all H2. So this is on leaving the Cedar Creek Mobile Home Park area, the designation as, and so oning as left is, is in the 87 plan, that's basically the designation. Okay, and that motion, that amendment fails, Counsel Richter, Counsel Fox, Counsel Arnison, Counsel Sparrow, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed, so Counsel Long, you had...
Yeah, I'd move that we designated MH1.
Okay, so it's moved by Counsel Long to designate the area as MH1, seconded by Counsel Qualley. Discussion, Counsel Long, did you wish to speak to it, or have you spoken enough on it? Okay, I see no further discussion, so I'm going to call a question. That carries unanimously. Okay, so MH1 designation, just trying to catch up my notes here. Okay, so now looking to Counsel for any further amendments. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment, and I'm not quite sure where to put it, maybe staff can tell me. We talked about it this afternoon, about making it very clear that the total Brookswood Fernridge population at buildout, which includes the parts that already are built and the parts that will be built, would be 39,000 by 2042.
I think staff can find that section, it's fairly close to the beginning, I believe. Mr. Seffy, I know it'd be adding like a word or something, we can figure what that word will be to, to give that certainty, clarification.
I'm going to need help.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Nelson might have the reference.
I remember seeing it too, but...
So it's section four, Your Worship, page 197 of Counsel's agenda, that's the hard copy. And as I understand it
Okay, so it's...
The intent is to ensure or provide more clarity, and the suggestion might be to say the last sentence to be amended to read as follows, "The land use plan for the entire area of Brookswood Fernridge accommodates a population of 39,000."
At buildout.
That's moved by Counsel Richter, so...
Yeah, at buildout, I think we have to put that in.
The land use plan for the entire area of Brookswood Fernridge, or for Brookswood Fernridge accommodates a population of approximately 39,000 at buildup, buildout, is that, is what you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Is that, is that language workable? Yes, that's seconded by Counsel Fox, so I'll open up number one, discussion, I've opened the queue, Counsel Long?
Well, I wish I had the same crystal ball, but 2042 is a long ways away, and I understand the sentiment, we don't want to, the sentiment that we don't want to, you know, overpopulate the area, but I don't know how we can possibly predict what will happen between now and 2042. The, the figure of 39,000 comes from the calculations that we're passing in the, in the designated plan tonight. Future councils will consider neighborhood plans as they come forward, and if they're consistent with this plan, you'll end up with the 39,000, but I can't say what a council will do 20 years from now, so as much as I'd like to, it sounds good, I don't think how, how you can really support that.
Thank you. Counsel Arnison?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I'm, I'm going to support this, because I, I feel despite what we've been given as a projected number, that there is an opportunity here to consider over the course of time, that we actually might want to have less individuals living here, and that's for a number of reasons. It could be significant environmental reasons, and certainly there are reasons to believe that the climate is changing, the degree to which we can rely on certain resources might not be there in the future, so I like the idea, actually, I'm not going to make an amendment, but to actually be 39,000 or less, because I'm hoping that when we look at each of the neighborhoods, there might be some consideration for actually reducing that, and I would say that Metro itself is starting to reconsider some of the densification plans that they have, and it is an artificial number, it's just a population projection, but I'd like to cap it at something, so I, I would support this.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I, I like this motion, I don't think the intention, and I guess we could hear from the mover, but I don't think the intention on this particular motion was about capping it, I think the intention was to make sure that people understood that this was for both the developed and the undeveloped portions of Brookswood Fernridge that encompasses the entire area. It does say approximately 39,000, this particular motion isn't talking really about capping it, it's really about making sure that both areas are combined, and we understand it's for the entirety.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? So I'm going to call a question on the amendment. That carries, Counsel Long opposed. Okay, so I'll close those results, and Counsel Long, did you, okay, clear the queue, start all over again?
I'm all good at the moment.
Okay, any other, Counsel Richter?
Yeah, on the same vein, I was wondering, do we have estimates of what the buildout populations will be for each of the neighborhood plan areas, and do we need to put those in this as well?
Mr. Seffy, if you could perhaps provide some guidance on how the neighborhood plan populations are determined, and if we need to do the guidance at this level, or wait for that process?
I see help arriving, Your Worship.
Yeah, you might want to keep them close to you.
Okay. So, Your Worship, the answer is that there are some projections based on the, the land use that is being proposed for, for the area, for the entire area, there are projections for, for each of the neighborhood boundaries, within the neighborhood boundaries, as defined in the plan, and both in terms of population, as well as what percentage of the overall committee plan they constitute.
So what are those populations for Rin, Booth, Glenwood, and Fernridge?
Booth is 11,700, these are approximate numbers, Your Worship, 11,700, approximately 30% of the overall. Fernridge is 9,000, approximately 23%. Rin is 5,000, approximately 13%. Glenwood is 3,500. Glenwood is 3,500, or approximately 9%.
Could, I'd like to make a motion then that we add that sentence following the last sentence that we amended. So the approximate buildout populations of the NP areas will be Rin, 5,000, 13%, Booth, 11,730%, was it Fernridge, 9,000, 23%?
That's correct.
And what's the last one?
Glenwood.
Glenwood, and what's Glenwood's?
3,500, at 9%.
1,500, 9%.
Those numbers would be approximate...
Approximate, yeah.
Approximate, because there may be some trade-offs once we get into that detail, and I don't wanna, I maybe defer to Mr. Seffy, how about when you get to the neighborhood planning stage, will this work? I just wanna make sure that, you know, we might find that one area, we don't wanna put as much population in for whatever reason, environmental or whatever, and we wanna move it to the other, this still allows for that?
Well, it's difficult, your worship, to say yes or no for sure at this stage because each, each plan will reveal in its own time, once we have more information, more ground truthing, more discussions as to what the appropriate numbers might be, there may be some variations, so as long as council is aware of that.
Yeah, so, but it's, if we just say buildout populations in the four neighborhood plan areas will be approximately, yeah.
That allows enough flexibility. Is there a second, or Counselor Arneson seconds, I'll open up discussion on, on the amendment as, Sir Whitmarsh?
Yeah, the only question I had was, is that information already in the document or is it, this would be the first time we're placing it into the plan? This is the first time?
It is the first time, it is not in the document, your worship, it's part of the background information that staff has used to come up with the 39,000.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Qualley?
Thanks, I think we have a target to hit, and I think this kind of detail will be revealed in the neighborhood plan piece, which is why it isn't in this document, so I'm comfortable with the total number without drilling that down to this level of detail at this point, I think that's a neighborhood plan conversation, so I'm gonna, not gonna support the motion because I think we've got a big number and we've already agreed that that number's sufficient and we'll let this smaller piece figure, you know, work its way through the neighborhood plan process.
Thank you, and I agree with you, I'd like to see it, I think we have a big number, exactly as you say, and it allows that flexibility, hate to, I hate to tie future councils up when there may be a very good reason for shifting some of that population, even though I know it's approximate, it's a good point, but it's just my comments. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, well, when we get to the neighborhood plan level, what's gonna happen is we'll be dealing with each of them alone, so I think it's important to set the whole stage with this document to say, all right, this is where we want the neighborhood plans to go in the direction of, and I don't think it hurts us to specify that. I don't think it's handicapping future councils, I mean, future councils are gonna do what they're gonna do anyway, I mean, they could amend the whole thing. But I'd just like, I would feel more comfortable if we specified right now what the densities in those NP areas will be.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that amendment? I'll call the question. And the amendment passes, mayor froze, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Long opposed, so, okay, so I'm gonna, Counselor Qualley, did you have, did you have?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna clear, sorry, I cleared the cue, if you wanna push the button again, Counselor Arneson? I'm just trying to keep, keep up with the cue here. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I would like to promote a, promote, have a revision. I would like actually to include in the language the protection of the rural character and small-town aesthetic by limiting the height of buildings to three stories.
Okay, is there a second? Counselor Davis seconds, so I'm opening amendment, the amendment?
Can I speak to this?
Yes, you can.
Oh, thank you.
Just push your button again and then, as I had to open up.
Okay. I noticed throughout the language when people were talking about the values, one of the things that they really cherished was the idea that it had a small-town feel, and I think that that needs to be translated somehow into a sense of scale. There was also language around the heritage of the area, and we have some, you know, visible heritage still left, but to me, part of the heritage value, we don't have a conservation area, but I think what we do have is a sense that the community really values this small-town feel, and I think just by limiting the height of buildings to three stories, it's going to limit that scale. I think we can get enough density still with that height and that it will be helpful to maintain that aesthetic.
Mr. Seffy, I know you had a comment there.
Thank you, worship, just for council's information in terms of, I guess, this particular motion, the ability to provide underground parking is going to be significantly reduced, which means that surface parking will be, become more prominent and predominant form of providing parking by reducing the height provisions.
Thank you for that comment. Okay, Counselor Davis?
I'm gonna support this, I, I think we might have a heck of a time keeping it to three stories, I mean, Fort Langley can't, I mean, we can't, and Willoughby, and every time a, every time a proposal comes in, it's upscaled and they wanna go two or three, they wanna go higher, I, but I think that Brookswood has a certain, it has a certain feel to it, and I don't think we wanna build the buildings any higher than the trees, so I think we should, I, I support that and I'm gonna vote for it.
No higher than the tallest palm tree. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, I can't support this for three reasons. Number one, the underground parking, we need to think about that, we saw where that became an issue, underground parking. If we want parking underground, we wanna save surface area, we wanna serve green space, we have to have underground parking. That's critical and four stories is imperative. If you look at seniors' housing, seniors' housing is community, and community care, we look across the street, how many stories is across the street? We look up the street, they're all four stories, four or five. If we're gonna have care facilities, we're gonna have seniors' apartments, we're gonna have those kinds of provisions in our OCP, we need four stories because those become important characteristics of building seniors' community within the context of the plan around the commercial and retail area. I think that it clearly states in here that the four-story, and maybe Mr. Seffy, you can correct me on that through your worship there, that the four-story will be set back, so the visual from the street is three stories, the four-story is not visible from the street at the street level on any of the buildings, am I correct?
That's correct, your worship, DP guidelines make reference to that.
Right, so the DP guidelines say they've gotta set that third, fourth story back, so the visual from the street, if you're walking down the street, will be three stories, it's set back. So this becomes a really important piece, and if we say, okay, it can only go to three stories, are we limiting seniors' housing, affordable housing, care, congregate care, and all other elements associated with some of the delegations we heard, it's triple-A housing, all these people have come to us and said, we need this kind of housing. Okay, so you can only go three stories, so you do the math, and you know what? You've just cut it out, it can't happen, I'm sorry. You've gotta, you just look around at Athanry, or not Athanry, the one up in, the ones in Murrayville.
Up at 48th?
Avalon, Avalon, the one across the street, these ones here, they're all four, five stories because they need that many stories to make the community within the congregate care work. And I think that if we say it's maximum three stories, we're cutting out, it doesn't mean that everyone's gonna be four stories, it means that three stories, or sorry, four stories is a possibility.
Counselor Long?
Well, your worship, it'll seriously affect the affordability of the homes if you're gonna take a story off, it's gonna change the population numbers, as I didn't support, but now you may have to go back and revise those. But I think the other thing is viability of businesses, if you try and run a business these days, you need people to shop and frequent your store, so if you take the area that's gonna have the most concentration of people and say, well, we'll cut it back by 30%, I suppose, 25, 30%, I think that you're affecting the viability of those businesses. For all the reasons that have been discussed, I think the four stories are important, especially the parking, because if you, that's what was brought up initially by Mr. Seffy, if you take that story off, I don't think you're gonna be able to afford to dig a hole and put the parking below where you want it. But think about the businesses that are gonna be in the core, they're gonna need people, so you need concentration in those areas.
Counselor Qualley?
Thank you, I actually agree with Counselor Fox, I think, I didn't hear anybody at the public hearing talk about the three stories versus four stories, so I think the fourth story isn't just about residential density, it's not about building condos and townhouses, this is about building maybe a care home for some of the people who live in Brookswood who wanna stay in Brookswood and, and receive care as seniors there, so I think that, to me, is what I'm looking at here, and I don't wanna limit our option, if we can find a way to keep our seniors in Brookswood, I think the, having that four-story is really important. This isn't just residential density, and I think to Mr. Seffy's point, leaving the underground parking is really critical to not having to amass a ton of surface parking and rely on street parking for the seniors and people who are coming to visit them, so to Counselor Fox's point again about the sighting and the character and the visualization from the street, so it does look like three stories, I'm happy with that, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to reduce that by 25% when I didn't actually hear anybody ask for that.
Thank you, Counselor Richter?
Well, I thought we went through the underground parking thing in Fort Langley, and it's three stories you need to get underground parking? I'm happy with three stories here, I think it'll make it more characteristic for, for Brookswood, so I'll support the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Just a couple of points, the degree to which we don't have any specific business plans, so we're sort of relying on our, our own understanding about what the business model would be, whether we need three or four stories, so I think that's kind of questionable, and we do have some other options for seniors' care as opposed to congregate care, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to that, but really, I do think it's important to have an appropriate scale of building, and I do question whether or not we have the appropriate empirical information so that we know that if we are allowing four stories, that actually the geophysical conditions allow us to have underground parking there. I don't know that that's the case, there's a aquifer, I don't know what the water table is like, and so without seeing that actual information, I'm not sure that this is a fair trade-off to say that we're necessarily going to be able to have the underground parking there as, as opposed to the surface parking. So, you know, for me, the other important issue is that if you have a baseline of three based on recent experience, there's always a request for four or five, I'd rather start lower and move up than start higher and, and move up from there, so I, I'm still in support of the three stories.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
I did have a question about the density here, and I'm wondering if it's related to number of stories, maybe staff could clarify. So the height is specified in policy number two, but policy number three says minimum density of 99 units per hectare and a maximum density of 148 units per hectare. What, is the minimum like a two-story building and the maximum's a four-story building?
Mr. Seffy?
That relates to four stories, your worship, the, the density range that Counselor Richter referenced?
Oh, okay, so if it was a four-story building, it would be 99 to 148.
That's correct.
So if we, if we, this amendment goes through, then we'd have to amend those densities too, wouldn't we?
That was referenced earlier as well, your worship, as having an implication on the ultimate projected population.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd like to put my comments, I, you know, having underground parking is just one, one point, you know, aspect of this, allowing for seniors' residences, care homes is another, having, you know, I think it's important that we remember that land is very precious, and at some point in our community, we need to go up, and certainly that's consistent throughout the world, you see going up, and the percentage of land in the Brookswood Fernridge plan that's designated for this type of building is extremely small. Mr. Seffy, maybe you can give a little bit of an indication how much, and this is just, I believe, in some of the commercial areas or in the high-density areas?
One area.
Yeah, one area, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's a very small part of the entire plan, but it does allow for density uses where it's most appropriate. I think it's important to have it there for a lot of the reasons that were pointed out tonight, and I certainly won't support limiting it to three stories, I believe our land is too precious to do that, and I think some places have to go a little bit higher. So I'm gonna call the question on this amendment. The amendment is to limit the height to three stories, yeah, so limit the height to three stories, everybody supported? So the amendment fails, Counselor Fox, Counselor Whitmarsh, mayor froze, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Spurrow, Counselor Long opposed. Okay, so we now move on to, Counselor Richter, did you have something else to add?
Oh, I've got a lot more, but I'll let other people have a chance to talk.
Okay, I will just clear the cue, and that way we get to start over again. Anybody have any other amendments to add? Well, Counselor Richter, you just push your button and I'll get you on there and let's roll them out.
Okay. Just, okay, the first one I think we need to tackle is phasing, and I'd, there were some people who spoke at the public hearing and also who wrote to council that said they wanted phasing from the north to the south in order to minimize disruptions to the community as it grows and, as it expands and develops. So I'd like to make that amendment, that phasing of this OCP occur going from the north to the south to minimize disruptions to the community as it expands.
Okay, is there a second? Counselor Arneson seconds it, so that amendment, so discussion on phasing. Counselor Long?
Well, I don't know how you could actually put those two statements together, how do you know it's going to be less impact to the community? And then, of course, we don't own the land, so we're gonna have to depend upon what, what the market is gonna drive and who wants to come up with the money, so I think if you wanna hamstring yourself that way, that can be dangerous. It sounds okay, but I don't know if it, if it's actually doable, and I don't know if it really would minimize disruption, but I would be very cautious in, unless we own all the land, how can you really say who's gonna come forward? And we don't own the land.
Thank you. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, well, I heard a couple of different things and I have a great deal of, a challenge with the word phasing because I heard you can't do, you can't move from, you have to complete one neighborhood plan before you can move to another neighborhood plan, and if it's not 100% finished, then you can't move and so on and so forth, and we create an artificial market and so on and so forth, we had a great discussion about that this afternoon. My, my concern or my priority would be the interface, the interface with the developed area in Brookswood. I think that we need to prioritize, not give sole exclusiveness to a development proposals that come in on the interface between the undeveloped and the developed area. And I'll give you an example of that, if you look between, and this is not a particularly good diagram, maybe the other diagram, the land use, land use diagram might be better if I could. If you look at the area between 32nd Avenue and 33, west of 200th, if that area between 32nd and 33A were given priority proposal to those particular, and we've had one come in there, and there may be others, I don't know, in that regard, and we were to give priority, not exclusive priority, but priority encouraging that area to develop as quickly and effectively as possible based upon the land use that we finally accept, whether it's the 1987 plan or this plan, and do that interface so that those people north of 33A don't have to live with piecemeal construction. If we look over on, from, on 36th Avenue, between 36th, between 200th and 208th, if we look at, there's one pocket there right at the corner of 200th and 36th, I'm not sure if there's a proposal in on that or not, I have no idea, I've heard of varying degrees of comments about that, but if you look over on 205th, the piece that's right at... But if you look over on Two-hundred-and-fifth, the piece that's right at the west of Two-hundred-and-fifth, we've already given third reading to that. That's an interface right there, and if it's done at seven thousand square plus foot plus lots, it fits the nineteen eighty-seven plan, it fits the two thousand seventeen update. There's one piece there to the east, it doesn't, we haven't seen nothing yet, and my understanding is the individual's not interested. But we can get the plan in place, maybe encourage them, if you, sorry, if you go up to Cedar Creek, I think it's called Cedar Creek, isn't it? Cedar Ridge, south. That interfaces with Cedar Ridge's north. If those people can come, I think there was an eighty-four person submission on that, if those people can get together, get their neighborhood, the sub-neighborhood plan, that area, below them is the Rod and Gun Club. Well, I don't know what's happening to the Rod and Gun Club, but it's certainly not happening tomorrow. So, again, that interfaces to the north, it interfaces to the west, to a commercial area, the red. So let's get the interface pieces done, and I would like to say, growth and change in Brookswood should proceed with priority given to development proposals that interface with the existing development in place in the developed section of Brookswood.
I have no problems with that, and I don't think it's contradictory what I'm doing.
Okay, well, I think it-
It's a separate motion. We'll deal with it motion by motion, amendment by amendment.
No, I'm just giving you wording.
That's right, thank you, yeah, for next time. Thank you, Counselor Richter?
Well, I think there's a very good reason to do phasing, and that reason is called Willoughby, because Willoughby is such a patchwork quilt, and, I mean, look at the condition of Two-oh-eighth Street, and how many complaints, I mean, that's one of the worst roads in all of B.C., apparently, and it's still not done. So I think what the residents have been asking for is progressive and orderly development. Now, that's not to preclude, we heard today from staff, that if seventy-five percent of the landowners owning seventy-five percent of the land get together and they want to initiate a neighborhood plan, they can do that, but it's just to say, look, our expectations are either Booth or Rin will be the first one to go, and that's where the development will be localized for the first phase. So I'm, I think we do need phasing, I think we need phasing simply so we won't repeat the Willoughby experiment, which hasn't exactly been very positive for many people.
You, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think the idea of progressive orderly development, I think, makes sense, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but it does make sense that we are orderly, I think there's, people want to have some kind of progression scene, but I have trouble with the concept of phasing, at least as I understand it, with each neighborhood needing to be completed before we move on. We don't own the land, and, you know, when those people decide to develop is up to them. We can't compel people or force people to develop because they happen to be in that area where we're asking for development. And so I think there might, maybe there's some ways, I liked some of the words that Counselor Fox has also mentioned about along the edging of the developed area, so the concept of phasing, I think, is troublesome to me, and there's other ways, I think, to get at it, and so I wouldn't support us moving in phasing, but I certainly am supportive of orderly, progressive, some kind of development.
Thank you, Counselor Sparrow?
Yeah, I think we've certainly talked about this before, previous as council, from a whole perspective for our community, for development. I certainly think we, I think, should have a plan, and I don't know if the word is phasing or orderly growth or what the semantics are going to be, but I, and, you know, I hesitate for us at nine o'clock at night to be starting to kind of create that policy, so I do think, you know, the patchwork quilt of what Willoughby has been and the growth, the way it has been, can be certainly a lesson that we can learn and implement maybe in the future here, and I know other communities do look to phasing and sort of controlling when they allow certain parts of their community to be developed and how they allow the neighborhood planning process to go forward. So I wouldn't suggest that we would need to have each neighborhood plan complete and fully built out before we start another, but I do think we need to have some sort of plan, so our infrastructure and our development can be done in an orderly way. So I don't know if the wording of it, as it's been moved, is the right way to go about it, or if it's maybe just some type of direction to staff to create that sort of policy, as a sort of aside, separate thing, that's not necessarily spelt out completely within the OCP, but that is referred to within the OCP through phasing, or whatever term we come up with. But I do think it's something that we need to address and come up and look at neighboring communities for what they're doing and how they're approaching it. We're certainly not the only community dealing with these issues, so.
Thank you, Counselor Qualley?
Thanks. I think the idea of phasing is, as we learned today, it creates a bit of a false economy for some people that decide not to develop when the rest of the area develops, and it creates a bit of a, as I said earlier, a bit of a hostage situation, where one or two people who decide, maybe they don't even live in the country and they own property and decide they're not ready to develop, nothing can move forward until they decide to do something. And, you know, I think there's a lot of pieces in this plan that differentiate it in a million ways from Willoughby. This is not Willoughby, this is not Willoughby South, the density is less than half of anything remotely close to Willoughby. And I think that staff and council and planners and everybody has learned a lot of lessons in the planning around these new neighborhoods, whether it's Willoughby or Surrey, and I think there's already a lot of safeguards built into this plan that prevent a lot of the mistakes that were made in some of these other areas. We heard earlier about the street width and on-street parking, and all of those kinds of things are already built into this plan that have been addressed from some of the challenges that have been experienced in Willoughby. So I think that, short of the township front-loading all the costs for the development, I think, and I don't think we should be doing that at all, I think that by implementing some phasing strategy that is really prescriptive in this way is going to tie our hands in the future. This plan has to last for a long time, and I think we need to be really careful about the language that we're adding to this. A lot of the challenges that have happened in Willoughby have been addressed in this plan, it's just a completely different plan, and there's no comparisons to what's gone on in Willoughby. So I'm not going to support some language around phasing, I think this council can decide how the neighborhood plans move forward, when and how, or if they move forward, and this is a discussion to have at the neighborhood plan level. This is an overarching document for the whole thing, that in my mind has no comparison to Willoughby.
Thank you, Counselor Long?
Your Worship, there is an automatic phasing component to any community plan, and that's what council will entertain when it comes forward, so I think it's automatically there. You certainly don't want to restrict landowners, if there's seventy-five percent of the owners with seventy-five percent of the land are ready to develop, they should come forward and they should be heard by council. Whether council proceeds or not is totally up to the council of the day. So putting in a phasing plan, as been discussed by many on council, could be actually very dangerous, could actually backfire on you considerably. And Your Worship, I know we're having loose discussions here, but all this talk about Willoughby, I think that's disrespectful to those that live there and enjoy it, it's a terrific community that's underway. Sure, it has some growing pains, but let's be careful and mindful of those that live there and enjoy Willoughby, so let's not be talking nasty about Willoughby. Anyway, this is Brookswood we're talking about. Thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, well, I don't want to get hung up on the wording, it's the concept, and I'm not suggesting for a minute that the township front-load infrastructure costs, or that the township insists that one plan can't go forward until the other plan is absolutely completely done, because that will artificially inflate prices in the other plan. But it's the concept of orderly progressive development, so, I mean, how do you want to word it? I don't care, I'll take, I'll get rid of the word phasing, as long as we have something in to signal to developers, we're not going to go at the redevelopment of Brookswood in a hodgepodge, helter-skelter fashion. It's going to be orderly and it's going to be sequential, and this is where we're going to start, and maybe, you know, go to Counselor Fox's motion, I didn't think what he was suggesting in his wording was not going to fit in with phasing, and I think maybe our staff have to be able to set clear and realistic expectations for developers. So if somebody comes in and buys up a piece of land down in the south end of Fernridge and expects to develop it tomorrow, it's not going to happen if we're doing orderly progressive development. And I, this, this is the point where we need to build the safeguards in, we need to have an OCP that sets a very good framework for moving forward, and I don't think there's enough protections in this to make sure that all of the Willoughby experiment isn't repeated here. I think there's some good protections, but-
Excuse me, excuse me?
It's-
Just carry on.
Yeah, there's some good protections here, but let's do orderly sequential planning and development, and maybe we should, you know, Counselor Sparrow made a very good comment earlier today about, this is a big document to go through, we've been at it since one o'clock this afternoon, and maybe this is one of the topics we could put on a parking list to come back to at our meeting tomorrow when we're fresher, and see if we can hammer it, because surely we can hammer out some sort of a language agreement to make sure this happens, this orderly progressive development.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Actually, I sort of like elements from both of those different amendments. Maybe some language would be helpful, although wordsmithing at this point is probably not that great. Substantial completion of neighborhood plans, you know, maybe there is some triggering point in which we could consider a new one in order to create some rationality. But I also do like Counselor Sparrow's proposal, I believe, that we need to craft some kind of policy that goes around this. I think it's important to have a framework, and actually, if we are really dictating in terms of development what we believe is in the best interests of the community, then I think that that's part and parcel of what needs to happen, is a corollary to this plan, is that we need to devise, you know, personally, I began to see it in the interface way, but going from the north down to the south, but if there's other propositions that would work, that's fine, but I just, you know, I feel that that would be the most appropriate way to go forward.
With the discussion on the phasing of OCP, seeing that, I would like to wrap up, it was my comments. We had a pretty good discussion on phasing, and it can, I think, present more problems than it solves. I think Willoughby is a great community, people move in there every day and they love it, some may don't, may not, but I don't think it's up to us to criticize Willoughby, it's not an experiment, it's been moving through its process. However, in Willoughby, there are a lot of community plans, and I don't know the number exactly, I don't know if Mr. Seffy or Mr. Nell, there's ten, ten neighborhood plans in the Willoughby community plan. So, yeah, you know, it takes time to get through that, but this is four, the phasing's already in place. I mean, there's only four plans, we're not talking ten plans, we're talking four. One thing that's going to limit someone deciding to go to the south end of Fernridge is they have to bring the services to that area too, so that's going to be a huge cost, so there's going to be a natural progression. However, I think by us limiting an area that wishes to go forward, and again, as Counselor Long so aptly pointed out, council will make those decisions once a proposal comes to council on doing a neighborhood plan, because budget decisions have to be made, staffing decisions have to be made, so council will be in control of the neighborhood plans. So I'm not in favor of phasing, there's a lot of reasons that we, that it's not going to be hodgepodge, there's only four plans, it's not as complex as some other areas in the community, so I won't support this, and hopefully we can move on. Thank you, I will call a question. Oh, there was, you didn't have your-
Can we have the motion?
Oh, the motion?
Please read out the motion, thank you.
The motion reads that the phasing of the OCP occur from the north to the south to minimize disruptions to the community.
Counselor Fox, Counselor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Davis, Counselor Long opposed, okay?
Five-minute recess, Your Worship?
Certainly, we'll take a little break, let's take, with leave of council, unanimous consent, we'll take five minutes, thank you. Counselor Fox here next up. We'll now bring the regular evening meeting back to order and carry on where we left off, so Counselor Fox is next up. Counselor Fox, yeah, I'm thinking. So, growth, I'd propose the following wording amendment, if I could. Section, which section is that in the- Hang on, two shakes, let me just do a bit of homework here quickly. It would be section nine point one. Nine point one, phasing? I would move that we change the wording in nine point one, phasing, to read, "Growth and change in Brookswood Fernridge should proceed with priority given to development proposals in the Booth and Rin neighborhood plans that interface with existing Brookswood in the developed area." Okay, so move by Counselor-
Should we just have an hour discussion on this?
No, but that's, this is a different wording, let's just get on the floor and let Counselor Fox explain the wording. So Counselor Fox moves it, Counselor Richter seconds it, so Counselor Fox, perhaps you want to explain some of the wording in there? And I know-
Well, the Booth and Rin neighborhoods are in the north. I again go back to my comments about the interface, and I think priority should be given, so development proposals could come in, but priority doesn't mean exclusivity, it means priority be given to any development proposals that come in. So if a development proposal came in, let's just say, I'm just picking up, at one Twenty-eighth Avenue and one Ninety-sixth, for example, and another one came in and it was at the corner of Thirty-three A and One-Ninety-sixth, priority would be given to the one at Thirty-three A and One-Ninety-sixth because that area interfaces. Didn't mean it, and it would be given a higher priority in the, moving through the order in which staff deals with this, so that we can get the interface pieces with the developed area, and that's, I called it the, in the developed area, Brookswood developed area, get those areas done, or those, that interface done as quickly and efficiently as possible, and then move from there. So that's my explanation.
Thank you, Counselor Long?
Well, Your Worship, we just spent an hour talking about the pros and cons of phasing. Council has the ultimate decision-making when it comes to what's being put forward. I don't think it was appropriate, and I was going to make an objection earlier, Worship, that we even talk about this corner of the plan and that corner of the plan, because you're going to be affecting values of the land just by mentioning it. It's going to come, if council of the day wants to extend a neighborhood plan to come forward, it can put the money on the table and instruct staff to do so. So it has total power to do that, but to do it in this community plan isn't appropriate. I don't, I think, would like a comment from staff, Your Worship, that's fine if council wants to take action on the visionary plan, but to put it in the plan actually takes the visionary aspect out of it. Anyway, I believe that that belongs outside of the community plan that we're voting on and deciding on tonight. Maybe staff does have- Maybe staff does have a comment.
Thank you. Maybe they won't back me up. You asked for a comment from staff. Mr. Seffy, do you have...
I guess the question to staff, Your Worship, so we're clear, would that be more appropriate to determine which ones come forward in the neighborhood plan process or in, after this plan has been adopted, rather than putting it in the plan?
Your Worship, it could be, it could be either way, I guess, either as part of the plan, as being suggested, or as being moved by Counselor Fox, or independently as part of a separate, separate resolution, independent of the committee plan process. As I understand it personally, the intent is for priority being staff processing of development application being given to those areas adjacent to the existing developed area, which is a bit different than what was discussed earlier, based on my understanding.
I understand that, Your Worship, but why does that have to be built into a visionary document that goes to 2024, 2042?
So what I heard is it could be done outside of the OCP process as a policy. Is that correct? So, okay, so if this, so if this fails, it doesn't mean that it's dead. We could bring it back. I'm just saying, if, if it goes that way, Counselor Fox, based on what I've heard. So Counselor Fox...
I don't mind if this, if this becomes policy number seven.
Okay, fair enough. Paul, if you see, there's six policies. If it becomes policy number seven, let priority be given to development proposals that interface. You see that? It's on page 50 of the plan. Yep. Then it's a policy. It doesn't affect the vigor visionary statement, which is the first paragraph. It just, it's a policy, and once it's dealt with, it falls off the board. Mr. Backen?
Your Worship, the original motion was to amend 9.1. Was that an error? Is it actual to create policy number seven?
I think, I think maybe, in terms of discussion, it may be better to put it as a policy, a policy number seven.
Then you'd need second or concurrence.
So if, with unanimous consent, we'll take that amendment, if there's unanimous consent. So we'll move to the amendment to put it as policy number seven, not under nine... Not under the initial paragraph in 9.1. I see no, no dissent, so then we'll change that. Okay. So I'll carry on with the speaker's list. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. So by priority, you mean, if I'm hearing this correct, the application would jump the queue so that staff would process it before other applications in stream? Is that what you mean by priority?
If they were farther away from the interface. Now, yes, that's basically what I mean, but realizing that really there's not a lot of, of my, my point that I made earlier, much earlier, there's a number that have already been done that interface, so there's not a left, a lot left to do to interface. So I think this could take care of itself pretty quickly, and it would be in the next couple of years, and once it's done, it falls off the, the policy board because it's no more longer applicable.
So you're assuming that just by jumping the queue to have approvals that'll actually get built? We have developments that have been in stream for a long time here that have been approved and never get built. So I'm not in favor of giving priority to things to jump the queue so that now we have to wait for them to actually build out. We can't dictate when somebody builds. That could sit there for decades, waiting for somebody to build because it jumped the queue. So this isn't just another piece of phasing that, to me, doesn't make sense. Giving priority to things so that maybe they'll get built doesn't make any sense to me. And if you think it'll take care of itself, then, then let it take care of itself. But I can't support this because it's just, it's creating a false infrastructure that we can't get, it's just not part of this plan.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh? That's fair enough. That's, Mr. Backen, you have a comment?
Just a point of clarification, Your Worship. We understand the interface portion, but is that a cascading interface in that, should it be actually sliding continually to the south, or is it a one-time interface east to west?
The one time, so Counselor Fox, as a mover... It's the northern interface between the undeveloped and developed area. That's my motion.
Once there's a line of development, then that, that priority would then diminish and maybe be processed in accordance with our existing policies?
But in the plan, it, it designates the developed and the undeveloped area, so that would be, I believe, what Counselor Fox is alluding to.
That's a clarification, Your Worship. Is it just one line across the top, or as, once one line goes, do you keep going down, and down, and down?
Line across the top. One line.
Line across.
And that language sufficient to make that clear? Okay, thanks, Ms. Power. Counsel Whitmarsh, you got the floor.
Yeah, so just a question to the mover. So by priority, does this, my understanding would be, and you can, let me know if you feel the same way, that by priority, if, if there was no applications that were bordering on the developed area, other applications could come in anywhere within this plan and go through the normal process.
Yes.
So it wouldn't preclude other applications from coming. They would just be treated secondly or after the other ones were processed. Is that your understanding?
After interface, any interface application is processed. Yes.
Now, they, do they have to be completely built out?
No.
They don't. They just have to be, they just get priority processing for their application. That's what you're suggesting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other discussion, Counsel? Counselor Fox, you may push the button. I'm not sure if you... Yeah, I'm done. Okay, so at this point, we will call a question on this amendment. And the amendment carries. Counsel Qualley, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed. And so now we move on. I've got an amendment I would like to put on, and it's a submission that we received on the June 26 distribution, item number four, and it's from a property owner who owned two properties, and these properties in question are 20633, owned by Chester and Judy Glendening, and 20685, owned by Jeff Glendening and Edward and Kathy Butcher, which are requesting to have a change to SF1, single-family, one designation. They are, and requesting this to be contained in the bylaw, New Bylaw 5300. The designation right now is single-family two, I understand, and they wish to go to single-family one. And normally, I wouldn't consider it, however, I like their motivation, that there are, and the prime motivation, I'll read the points that they put into their submission. Number one, large stands of old-growth cedars can better be protected with larger lot sizes. It provides a green transition zone to that which is already in place along 204A, south from 24 Avenue to 20 Avenue, and from 204A east on 20 Avenue to 206. And we'll certainly have staff help us point out on the, on the map once I'm done this, on exactly where this is. It keeps the continuity established on the northern end of Campbell Valley with bylaw number 3996. It will provide a buffer zone between Campbell Valley Park, so those properties north that we all know and most likely be developed to a higher density in future, and provides, will continue to provide a home for the many species of wildlife, for example rabbits, deer, coyotes, to name a few. So the point, the property in question, if staff could just point it out, and it's, it's a long, yeah, thank you. So it's, it's this piece, I believe, five-acre parcel adjacent to the single-family one, and it's on the boundary. And the reason I bring this forward is because it is, certainly it provides a bit less density in the area, but it is, it does continue that SF1, and I thought that might bring me some merit and have council consider it. So I would move that amendment, that we change those properties designation to single-family one, and if there's a second, or Counsel Arneson seconds it. So any discussion on that? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. Just so I get it, I understand correctly, are you talking all of the properties that go along, or just the five acre, the one piece?
The, the request was from the property owners, I believe, is two properties, a total five acres. Mr., yeah, Mr. Nelson is nodding his head. It doesn't extend the entire southern border, but it does, it is adjacent to the existing single-family one. If you see the crosshatch...
Okay, yeah, so there's one, there are two lots there right beside it? Is that one, two squares?
Two lots, and is it total five acres? Yeah. And it, it just continues along the bottom, and there's some production there, and I thought that was worthy of council's consideration.
Worship, could you just specify the correspondence item, please?
It is item number four on the June 26 distribution. Do you have that there? So hopefully we get another motion. It's been moved in a second, just, perhaps, no, we have another, perhaps we can have the motion write out. I'm sorry I didn't prepare a written motion, but...
And it's 216, right? Is that...
The north, the north-south...
What's this?
That would be 208, wouldn't it?
208.
200, 204, 208, yeah. I find it rare that property owners want to downgrade. 26, June 26, Counsel Fox, that you're looking for? Item four.
So the motion would be to change the properties at 20633 and 20685. Is it 208 Street? No.
20...
28th Avenue, thank you. 20th, 20th?
20th.
Okay. So the motion would be to change the properties at 20633 and 20685 at 20, on 20th Avenue from SF2 to SF1.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Any discussion on that? Any further discussion? Counsel Qualley?
I just have a question. If that has any impact at all on the last two remaining lots, because that means there's, there's two lots left within the plan that are still at SF2 designation, does that have any impact on those lots at all?
Or Seffy, any positive or negative impacts?
Your Worship, I don't believe so, in terms of either negative or positive, the adjacent properties. It will have a minor impact on the overall population again, but it's going to be very, very minor.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a question. And it carries unanimously. Okay, Counsel Richter, sorry.
Well, while we're on the topic of individual property, so we're a couple more, I've got one of the addresses here, but I didn't write down who it was. Just a second here. 19817 24th Avenue wanted to be included in the townhouse/row house area.
And what are they, what are they currently designated?
I believe they're single-family.
No, they're yellow right there.
They're yellow?
Yes, the single-family wanting to go, yeah, so it's... Okay, so if this...
I don't know if they should or they shouldn't. They just wrote in and said they wanted that, so...
Yeah, but it's up, you know, it's, if I could just, you have a point of where, yeah...
Are we not getting into too, sort of, micro-managing this? Certainly adjustments to the OCP can be made at any time.
Yeah.
Case by case, that's just the background now.
But if, you know, if a member of council has from submission during the public hearing portion, whether oral or written, and they wish to champion that submission and have good reason, I mean, sometimes if somebody in the middle, I'm just going to say, for example, somebody in the middle of the yellow wants to go apartments, that may not be a good reason, but...
So where is this part?
So if Counsel Richter wishes to take that one and can argue for it, certainly it's up to councils. A discussion?
Well, I think I'd have to find the letter, which will take me a bit of time, so I'll come back.
It's a downzone, it's different than a downzone.
Yeah, this was a downzone, and it had some protection of environment, and it impressed me, and that's why I felt it was worthy of council's consideration.
Well, there was one other lady that wrote in, too, that she wanted her status changed in the plan. But I, you know, I think we should discuss it.
Certainly, I think Counsel Long had made a point, and maybe staff can help, help on this, is that at any time, even after the OCP is, is, you know, if this one is carried or any OCP, property owners do have the right to apply for amendments to the OCP and, and present their arguments. For example, the Cedar Creek Mobile Home Park designation, part of it was in this plan, multifamily, and that was changed. So somebody else may say, look, there's a, there's a gap here, and we, you know, 10 years, 20 years down the road, they may come and do an OCP amendment to provide some of that density back in. Certainly it's within their purview, and it would be up to council to consider that and make a decision. So that still is in place. So it, it doesn't... Give empty airspace.
Can we call a question?
Call a question. I'm going to allow Counsel Richter, if she wishes to...
No, I'll have to dig that up and come back to it later. I just don't have it right at my fingertips right now.
Fair enough.
What I did want to add in, if we could, was some reference in the plan to the lakes in Brookswood-Fernrich, being very important to the habitat and to the environment, and that they be designated as environmentally sensitive areas. So I don't know where in the plan we would put that. Maybe staff can suggest.
I'll ask Mr. Seffy, regarding the, the lakes. Now, are there specific lakes, or is it pretty clear which lakes we're talking about? I don't know. I know there's a couple out there, and I'm sure there's more. Lakes, puddles.
Your Worship, there are some provisions already in the plan. If, if council desires to go beyond that, certainly could be accommodated. One is by not showing them as a future neighborhood plan area, at least, I believe, Sunrise Lake, as you can see on the catchment, the neighborhood plan areas plan.
Well, it was a letter from Mr. and Mrs. French that came through. Item number 11 on June 22nd, which is what page? 231? I think that's the one.
June 22nd, 11. Do you have it there? Is it there?
What is that? 231?
That was June 22nd. Item number 11, page 231. No, that was not the one. I think it was another one that they'd sent in.
So Mr. Seffy, maybe you could explain some of the protections that are already in place?
Yes, Your Worship. So one was the omission of the area from the future neighborhood plan area boundary map, and the other is by referencing those areas as part of the open space and community amenity areas map and corresponding language in section 6.4, policies number two and three that reference protection of habitat areas and environmentally sensitive areas, cross-referencing the policy sections to the map that's on the slide right now.
Okay, I know I spread it online.
So the areas are protected as conservation park and open space areas, Your Worship, or natural lakes and ponds.
So there are some provisions in there with that?
They specifically, okay, this came on the 25th. There are also a few small lakes and ponds in the area, you're at 1.3.5. In fact, there are over 100 acres of surface water among several lakes in the OCP area, mostly privately owned. There are 70 households, and we, he wanted the lakes included in the protection protocol for streams and watercourses. So how do we do that?
Have they not already been protected as a, as a watercourse?
Yes, Your Worship, they are.
They are, on 6.2. So take a look at 6.2 in the, in the plan. May address the concerns. So I'm not sure if another motion would, you know, as this is an OCP, there certainly are policies, as I understand, that protect our watercourses and environment that work in concert with it.
Yeah, I think we should add it in as another, as a policy number six.
But what are we adding, exactly?
That the lakes in Brookswood-Fernrich be included as watercourses to be protected. This would be the environmentally sensitive.
Okay, I don't think there's a problem with that, if it's basically repeating what's already there, is that, or is it adding?
Well, it doesn't specify, it doesn't specify the lakes, and they wanted a specific reference to the lakes.
I agree, it's specifying, we already have it covered, however, I understand this is specifying.
The map is in front of you, your worship, it does reference lakes and ponds.
Yes, so it's already there on the map, so I'm happy to entertain the amendment if I so desire, but it's already there, as pointed out by Mr. Seffi. Might just require a little more clarification, if you have more questions of staff.
Well, I think, I think the concern is the quality of the water in the lakes being protected due to its importance in the area.
And that, that is in there, is that correct? Maybe, Mr. Seffi, you can give a little finer detail on what this protection entails.
Well, quality, your worship, of the water in the lakes is primarily a function of private ownership, and the township doesn't really have direct control over that. We do have indirect control over it by requiring measures as part of development of the surrounding area, such that the water quality is not impacted in the lakes, and those measures are in place. But again, if it is direct, direct, I guess, intervention, that would be something that would be subject to, or a function of private ownership and not public.
Is that satisfying?
No, I'm not.
So if you wish to place the amendment.
I wish to have the lakes specifically referenced as being environmentally sensitive and in need of protection.
Is there a second to that amendment? Counsel Arnesson seconds it, so I'm going to open up amendment one, so discussion on that, Counsel Arnesson.
Point of admission to that 6.2.6, is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, it would be six, number six under the policies.
Okay, Counselor Arnesson, you're on the floor.
Oh, yes, thank you. I feel like I'm on the floor. Thank you, given the late hour. I just wanted to add something to just the language, not that it has to be translated into the actual policy, but I believe part of the concern was the protection of the lakes through the development process to make sure that the hydrogeology, whatever might be changed as a result of the development, would not be negatively impactful to the quality or the quantity of the water. So I'm very supportive of this, because I think that that was part of the nature of the concern, so to make sure that the water balance there is protected.
Okay, any other discussion? Could you please reback the amendment?
That there be an additional policy, policy eight, that takes the. Six? Oh, 6.2, thank you. Under 6.2, so 6.2, that the lakes in Brookswood-Fernrich be included as watercourses and be protected as environmentally sensitive.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think it's a great point, but I just believe it's already in there, so, but either way, I think if it passes or fails, it's certainly there. So I'm going to call a question. And the amendment passes, with Mayor Fros and Counsel Qualley opposed. And Counsel Arnesson, do you have something else? No, okay. Are there any other amendments council wishes to put forward? Counselor Fox?
Well, I just wondered if we wanted to walk through some wordsmithing components, some, I'm not in tune to changing all shoulds to shalls or anything like that, but there may be some wordsmithing that might be of advantage to more clarification and tightening up. Do you want to do that, do you want to go through that, maybe at a separate time, just so that we can kind of agree on that, or how do you want to do that?
Well, it should be, as the process has been tonight, we're just dealing with amendments, so if there's some specific wording and specific places that you believe need to be changed, I think to go through the entire document, certainly that's council's purview, but let's see if some specifics.
Okay, well, why don't you move on to Counsel Arnesson, and then I'll evolve some.
Counselor Richter?
Well, I just wanted to, I agree with Counselor Fox, but I think it's going to be a bit of a longer process. We had four submissions come in that were very detailed, they're not all exactly the same. We had submissions from Mr. Ryan, Ms. Singleton, Ms. Marsden, and a Mr. McGary, and they're very well-thought-out, for the most part, of corrections that should be put in. So I've actually got a marked-up copy, and I'd like to go through it page by page.
Okay.
But.
That's, you know, it's, there's, I know we talked about the language, and I know staff have gone through it with the shalls and the shoulds and the maybes and the couldbe's and that sort of thing. However, this is OCP, and at the neighborhood, and we discussed it earlier, the neighborhood planning process is where we get into that more finite detail. I'm not sure, I mean, council certainly is, if they wish to do that, we can go through each line, but I'm wondering what the ultimate end would be, if it's, you know, the language is there, we're going to deal with it more, stronger language in the neighborhood plan process, so. Counsel Long?
Maybe you could take a vote, is it something that council wants to do? Because I heard clearly from staff that they do not recommend that we muck around with the wording at this visionary document, so maybe we can entertain the concept of mucking around with it, yes or no?
We can certainly do that, have a motion to.
Or if there's specifics, I'm happy to discuss it, but just to start going through and looking at words now, it doesn't make sense.
Well, it does make sense, because we had a lot of very articulate and detailed pieces of information come to us.
People didn't think this was an OCP visiting document, they wanted to be very specific, which we've already discussed all day, was going to happen at the neighborhood.
No, but when we had the discussion with staff earlier this afternoon, there's nothing to prevent us from putting more prescriptive language in. That's a choice that our staff have made, it's not required by law, and if we want to, and that's why I wanted to these people a consideration, they did the consideration of reading through the document and sending it to us. I think we should do the consideration back to them of going through the document and discussing their concerns. We might not agree with everything that they've said, on the other hand, we might.
So it would be up to a member of council to put forward an amendment with the language that they wish to see in the document, and if that language is exactly as a submission, that's fair, but if a member of council has that language to move it all as an amendment, just similar to what we did very early on in the process, where we had to make some changes to 4,000 square-foot lot to adapt to the motion that we made. So it would be helpful if members of council had that list of documents and presented it as an amendment, so that we could go through that.
I think the Marsden and/or the McGary are the good document, are the most detailed documents, and they're different, they are very different.
So we need to have a member of council, if you wish to do that, to move that amendment, but to go through those two and give some direction, because.
Well, I think we should take the time to go through the document, but I think we've got to deal with bigger issues or broader issues right now, and then we get into the nitty-gritty of the wordsmithing. We have another meeting, except for tomorrow at 4:00 anyway, we could get, we could do that in the meeting tomorrow.
If council wishes to table this motion until tomorrow, and then come back with a document with the changes, then this council could view those changes and debate them and then vote on it. That would be the way to handle it. Mr. Backen, do you have any direction you can help us with?
You referenced tabling a motion, your worship, there's no motion on the floor at this point, so this is the formative stages.
The motion is on the floor as amended right now.
The master amendment, but we're on amendment number 13 potentially, so we have no amendment 13.
That's right.
So your suggestion is wise, if there's, if someone wants to formulate an amendment 13, but there may be other amendments that are pre-formulated, we could continue with at this point.
That's right, yes, so, so if there are any other amendments, other than the wording, we could take a look at that. However, council does have that opportunity to then take the main motion that we've been dealing with and amended, and I think the proper process would be to table it and then bring it back again tomorrow.
You could table it, or you could defer it to a meeting, or we could adjourn this meeting to another time, and the process would simply continue. So it's really the will of council.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, Ms. Bauer, what to do with the motion, because there's a motion on the floor, it needs to be.
There is no motion on the floor.
Yes, there is a motion on the floor. The motion is the main motion, it hasn't been taken off the floor, the main motion we've been amending all night is on the floor. So that motion needs to be dealt with, it can be, so that we can reconvene or whatever. Ms. Bauer, you could.
At this point, you can do one of two things. If you'd like to discontinue the discussion this evening, we can adjourn this meeting until another time. Okay, and then that would leave, everything is it is, we just pick up the meeting and continue. If you would like to terminate this meeting, we take a motion for termination, and then, first of all, we would defer this bylaw to whichever meeting is selected.
So we could just adjourn the meeting, this motion stays live, adjourn the meeting to 4:00 tomorrow, and then, then we carry on with further amendments, and then I think that would, that would assist Counsel Richter in formulating her amendment that she wished to put forward. We are at 10:00, so under a procedural bylaw, we do need to make a decision whether we're going to extend.
I will move adjournment of this meeting to 4:00 tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, so it's moved by Counsel Richter, seconded by Counsel Arnesson, to adjourn to 4:00 tomorrow in this meeting room? So I'm going to ask for.
Is the meeting scheduled till 11:00 or till 10:00?
The, so there's, our procedural bylaw says that the regular evening meeting is scheduled to 10:00, the public hearing is scheduled to 11:00. We did the public hearing earlier, it would be really up to council, we would need a motion to extend the evening meeting, because we're now in the evening meeting. So, yes, if we've gone evening meeting into public hearing, public hearing can go to 11:00. So right now, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn to tomorrow at 4:00. I think we've done a lot of hard work, it'd probably be advantageous, there's still other motions to deal with. The tree bylaw still has to come forward, we have an item.
Let's just deal with 5300 first.
But I'm just saying, we do have a meeting with an agenda that includes a tree bylaw, and also includes items that are brought forward. So this isn't the only thing, and I don't think we're going to get through all of that stuff, even if we did extend an hour. So there is a German motion on the floor, and so I think just, I've got a whole list of names here, probably there before, I'm going to clear the list. If you wish to speak to the German, please push the button. Okay, Counsel Fox, then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. What I would request, there's a couple of, when we go through the language, a number of the implicated language changes are reflective of issues like the cluster housing and so on and so forth. So that language has changed because of the motions that we've set. I realize those motions haven't been voted on, okay, I understand that. But my point is, if, and I don't want, staff could look at this plan with the changes of motion that we've already put in place, and come back to us, it may solve a number of the language issues. The amendments that are in place, the number of the language issues that were referred to within, especially within SF1, SF2, and SF3.
So those are, they already had the language, there's a couple of minor amendments to those, so. Mr. Seffi, is it possible for tomorrow, 4:00, to have on table the amendments that were made?
And how they imply in the big picture here, because that.
Yes, yes, your worship.
Thanks. Okay, so Counsel Long, on the adjournment.
So, your worship, I just want to make sure then, which is fine, that we're going to adjourn, that please, would council bring back then with them whatever amendments they wish to have tomorrow night, so we don't have to defer yet again?
That's right.
Thank you.
I agree, thank you. Okay, so show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, carries? Meeting is adjourned till tomorrow at 4:00.